Is ready? All right. Going to call the meetings to order this time now seven P M. Everyone complete the plan for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Just to remind everyone, please please silence your cell phones. All meetings are being reported, uh visual and audio, okay? Um if anyone wishes to address the board, you could do so by coming up to the microphone. We do ask that you come to the front of the room. It's very difficult to pick up the audio when we're trying to um transcribe these four minutes. So um. Yeah, oh, and please sign in. Are we going to do our guests first?
Well, let's do the executive session.
Okay.
And the approval of the minutes.
And and.
They're they're number one.
Okay, so forgive us Peters a little bit ill, so I'll be the person.
It'll be my voice.
I'll be the voice tonight, all right? Um just to review, uh uh to put everyone on notice, an executive session was held after the April Board of Supervisors meeting. The time was from nine fifty P M to nine fifty five P M, and that was to discuss potential litigation. Next item then. All right, we're going to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Nope. Oh, forgive me. Okay. I see. Bad knots on, gotcha. Got it, got it, okay.
Yeah, there is no video, it's only audio, so I can hardly hear.
Okay. I'll confess, I didn't look at this before, I'm sat up here, so forgive me.
Trying to get the other ones done, so then go back, because that's going to take me time to do.
Okay, thank you. The rest of them. Okay, yep. So there's a lot of these minutes here, so just bear with us, please. All right, I'll make a motion for the minutes of September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Um uh Board of Supervisors meeting.
You can do it as one motion.
Oh, Colin's correcting me then, I'll make a motion then to approve the following meeting minutes. September twenty six, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors. October nineteenth Workshop Meeting, but that that meeting was canceled. October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors Meeting. November sixteenth Workshop Meeting. November twenty first Board of Supervisors Meeting. December fourteenth, twenty twenty four Workshop Meeting. December nineteenth, twenty twenty five, oh no, twenty twenty four, apologies, there's an error in there. Um Board of Supervisors Meeting. January thirteenth, twenty twenty five Reorganization Meeting. January twenty fifth, twenty twenty five Workshop Meeting. Yep. On February twenty second, twenty twenty five Workshop Meeting. March twentieth Special Meeting, nope, no, skip this, this one is done.
Yeah, so this one's done, the rest of them.
Okay, forgive me. On February twenty seventh, a Board of Supervisors Meeting.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion made by Irene, seconded by Jesse, we're on call Peter. Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh Treasurers Report, um I have nothing really to report, business as usual, we continue to have problems with mail. And some of our vendors are not receiving checks, so if you see duplicate checks or um checks for the same amount. All the checks have been canceled and we continue to have the mail problem no matter what we're doing, going to a different post office and. But we're reaching out to our vendors that aren't receiving it, but other than that. Um I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills for May twenty twenty five.
Motion made by Irene, seconded by Peter, we're on call Peter, Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
All right, next item is public comments. And we have some guests with us, this, are they, are they a agenda?
Item number one.
Item number one, okay. If you've signed in and you'd like to make a public comment, I'd ask that you come up to the, so the microphone, please state your name and address. Yep, Jesse's got that thing.
Fifty five Main Street.
Yep.
I'm referring, you know, fifty five Main Streets, Stasburg. Uh where are we at in this tree trimming's uh business? Somebody's got to come up with some kind of an idea to to get this here passed. No, I'm serious, it's not funny. If that tree falls over, it might kill me and somebody else.
Private property issue, we just, we discussed it a couple of minutes ago, Al.
It's gotta be something done. I mean, they can approve all kinds of stuff, you know, but not that.
It's.
With something dangerous like that?
But it's private property, we don't have any, yeah.
You want to get people to clean up their yard, that's fine. That's not putting anybody in danger, as far as I'm concerned. Them friggin' trees, yes.
Is there any other action he could take at a personal level?
I'm gonna have to talk to him, I don't know what he has to say, and then I'll bring it back here.
That's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Okay, that's for free, so.
That's a very good idea.
Uh. The uh, Marianne Kepler, what are you going to do with that?
There, that's actually one of the agenda items, and the contractor is going to be working on shouldering.
To take care of that drainage.
Dusens drainage.
Yeah.
Is directed towards the.
The stormwater, yeah.
It's probably, if the engineer were here tonight, he'd be much better served to explain that.
Yeah. When that was one of those things, until and unless we had that degree of rain, then we couldn't have known that it was that kind of drainage, so. Yeah, that's being discussed.
It's supposed to be here, it's the main, running a little.
The engineer, we paying this engineer's an awful lot of money, what they're doing?
Lot of things.
What?
All the roads. All the road projects.
What roads, ain't no project going in the roads?
Carl, can you give us a list?
Number sixteen on the agenda.
It's sixteen, we're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of projects.
We boil it down to.
I was looking at your, your map. Calendar and everything.
And then advertising. One of the things that we're doing this year is Carl's actually getting the list of roads together.
There's people here that does that.
Want to tell them when it goes out to bid, to bid on it. Because.
Yeah, it has to go to bed.
Go to bed.
Well, if somebody put a bid on it, it doesn't suit because a lot of money, make some phone calls, you got time to.
There's a.
There are rules against us directly soliciting the public.
Right.
Correct.
So you can call and suggest, but for legal reasons, we as a board are not allowed to reach out. And effectively show favoritism of, hey, this bid is going out, we want you to bid on it.
Whoever gives the best price, that's who gets the job.
Yes, I agree with you, but there's certain actions that we as a board. If you have somebody, we'll let you know when you can get that information publicly.
Peter, I brought this here even before you got on the board.
And I told you the same, well, you actually talked to me about that before, and I said the same thing, is like, tell them when you buy on it, and when it goes out to bid. Let them know that it's out on pending, because I welcome any and all bids.
I thought some of this too, yeah, I see. But yeah. Them trees, it should be top priority, and and uh those those braids they're putting, I never seen water going uphill to go down the drain. Impossible.
The contractor's looking at it, like I said, we have that.
And I hope we don't have to pay for the contractor again.
No, they're they're fixing it.
They're gonna take care of it.
Nailing the edge slightly and fixing the shoulder, that's what the notes are that we have here for for that. Check with the. Hey, Ving, you need to clean up shoulders, ready to, ready the road to defer as much as is ready to generate any adjacent property as possible.
Thank you.
An item there, yeah.
Item, yeah.
Um Jesse, give me that off.
Craig Lutz.
Yeah.
You could please come up to the microphone?
No, I just signed in.
Gotcha.
Here to hear the.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
All right, um Abby Lipak.
Here for the interview.
Here's the area, great, good. Alan Piper.
Okay.
Matt Barnhart.
We're to wait till item five comes up.
You got it? Beverly. Please state your name and your address, please.
Beverly Bronsman, four twelve Water Street, Stasburg, PA. Uh I um just wanted to let everybody know, I did uh four and a half hours of community service with the plastic back at the playground. I also did three and a half hours of work for Liberty Square, helping them try to get up some of their weeds and stuff. Uh I was also approached by several of the young people back at the playground. They would like to know if it's possible for the larger swings to have new chains on, like the smaller ones. And they were requesting information about uh when uh the basketball court is going to be painted. And uh some of the other things they, they enjoy coming back to the playground, but um it's kind of a little weird. Also, um I did weeding, when I did weeding back at the playground, now all the weeding that I've done, because there was no. Uh spray put on it is now back again, so all that effort I did was.
Well, that happens.
Exciting.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a lot of rain, I know Carl was working on getting us some bids for painting. Yeah.
Why do we need bids for painting when you have someone that wants to paint?
Painting and paving of the courts.
We're talking about.
Yeah, resurfacing, surfacing the courts.
Before we put any paint down on the courts, we fix the problem so that you don't have like gagged edges or cracks or anything like that. And so that the paint sticks to it better.
And remember when I was over there, when you guys got all that mulch? All the weed barriers are shot underneath the mall.
Yeah, I know.
So we should probably put new weed barriers down first, then re-mulch, instead of.
Right.
Putting out fires, but we'll have to weed every week.
It would have been done, I would have already did that when I took the weeding and stuff that I did around the slidy board. But because of my back, I can't get that off.
And we're not asking, I'm not asking you to do it.
Let us know.
But yeah, so that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stop, put a good effort.
Right.
Buy some liner and and have it there for the twenty eighth.
That's June twenty eighth, and I should be able to climb out too. Carl, can you look at the chain concern that she has on the swings?
Yep, yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll let them know.
Thank you, Beverly.
If you didn't grab a plastic tip.
Dan Klein.
Dan Klein.
Uh I'll wait till you get to the subject that pertains to me.
Great.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, please get your septic system pumped and inspected. You can call the office for a list of registered pumper's available upon request. If your pumper is not registered, just ask them to give us a call so that we can get them the information that we need to, for them to have in order to. Process it through our sewer management program, so um we are still accepting letters for support of the proposed sewer. Um again, if you want, there's a form letter available at the office, or you can write one up and drop it off at any time. Yep, you don't even have to be in favor of it.
If it's not in favor, make sure you state the reasons why you cannot afford it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and that's important too.
This is helping us try to get grant money, even if you agree or don't agree with the projects, you just have to agree, thus trying to get funding.
Yes. All right, uh first item then is the gentleman here to talk about the superstructure replacement of Charming Forge Road Bridge.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Can you introduce yourselves, just so we could have it for the record?
My name is Kevin Hartnett, I'm with MS Consultants, we're hired by Penn Dot to do the design. Of the superstructure replacement of the Charming Forge Bridge, as it's a township road five eleven. Over the former Charming Forge mill race. While Charming Forge actually is a township owned road, the the bridge is state owned. Current structure is built in nineteen forty one, existing steel beams are deteriorating. Bridge is currently posted for a maximum of twenty six tons. The project purpose is to address those structural deficiencies of the of the bridge and. The proposed work is a superstructure replacement, which means that the bridge beams, the deck, and the barriers. There will be some minor repairs to the stone abutments that hold the beams, but they will remain as they are now, they're not being replaced. Project also includes some minor approach roadway work. Um the bridge will have a new concrete deck, and I believe the limits of the yellow will be just new by two minutes pavement on each side of the bridge, just to sort of tie everything into the existing, existing road around there. And new guide rail at all four, all four corners of the bridge will get new guide rail runs, up to current um MASH standards. Both the bridge railing, the proposed bridge railing, and the guide rail tying it will be painted brown. To a better blend with the historic uh Charming Forge District there, as opposed to bright galvanized steel. On that topic, um Penn Dot has coordinated some historic coordination, and the project is anticipated to have no adverse effect to the Charming Forge its north district. We are currently finishing the preliminary design phase, uh and will begin final design later this year. Instruction tentatively scheduled for the summer of twenty twenty seven. We think it's going to take about six months, since it's just the superstructure, during which time traffic will be detoured. Uh the detour is about five point three miles long, estimated to take uh ten minutes. It uses, uh I'll just go. clockwise. SR thirty thirty seven, or Charming Forge Township five eleven to four nineteen, south four nineteen, across on four twenty two. Back north on SR thirty thirty nine North Water Street, and finally, uh back west on SR thirty thirty seven. My colleague Chuck and I, as well as representatives from Penn Dot, will be available outside, just these boards outside. Uh after my presentation here, if you want to look at them more closely, or have any questions. They'll answer your questions, if we don't know the answers to the questions, we'll get your name and contact information so we can get the answers. Um and we also encourage you to fill out comment forms, which we have available. Um if there's comments. Any comments you should have on the project. So I'll I'll answer questions if you have a few now.
Oh, again, when would this project uh anticipate the starting date?
Right now, we have construction scheduled for um the summer of twenty twenty seven.
Okay, so we've got two years then.
That's one question, you said you were gonna paint the 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 guardrails brown?
Correct.
Wouldn't that be a a kind of danger, you know, beans are back frozen and stuff?
Um well, the 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 road will have. Sure, there'll be delineators on there, yep, yep, and the road will have all normal sort of pavement markings and and delineations for safety. The only thing will be different, instead of that bright silver galvanized, the guide rail, the guide rail itself, guide rail itself.
I just, I do traffic studies with gins and tonic in my hand. And and I'll I'll tell you, the most traffic through there, the most uh, and this will peak, is ag traffic. Uh for those guys to make that uh circle would be huge. Is there any way you could do it kind of off season when they're not? Do it in the fall, over the winter, um rather than in the summer? Is that kind of scheduling feasible?
I feel like it's something that could be investigated in final design, I'll. That, that's probably, I think it could be investigated. Uh it's it's a relatively short window, we don't have the construction schedule totally refined, six months is maybe longer than what's actually needed.
Yeah, it sounded like a long time, too, but.
And and that can be refined, and we can, we can narrow it down, and we can, we can um. I don't want to use the word force, but the the contract can be set up such that, once we get a better handle on the actual construction durations. We can make it so that the contractor cannot close the road before a certain day, and must open the road by another certain day, or else incur some penalties based on the road users. Damages, fancy words, essentially.
Matt, one of the things to consider is depending on whether they do this, there's only certain times of the year that you can put blacktop down.
Well, yeah, I realize.
Pavement, concrete, they all have specific times. But we could potentially try to avoid some peak period, um it it can certainly be investigated in. I'll just add that typically, we tried to do construction in the summer, if there's any school bus traffic, uh random destruction through school buses. Then the detour that we have shown there is official signy for her. Public, there are some other local roads that that can be accessed by the locals. Yeah, this is the detour, if you follow the signs, you'll be following this detour, for everyone in this room, you probably know other ways that you'll go. Uh and and not, and maybe not follow the posted detour.
Is anyone familiar with the bus routes? Do any buses pass this row?
I'm not familiar.
Okay.
So I think they do, but I don't.
Matt, he would, he lives right there.
Yeah, I can tell you before my second gen in on it.
Feel like asking Matt, what time is your bar open?
I'm I'm very happy that you guys are doing infrastructure repairs, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um I see you've got a pretty long agenda, we're we're going to take the boards and just hang outside till about eight o'clock, if you want to look at them more closely. Um there's comment forms up front, and we'll have some outside as well, we'd appreciate any any feedback you might have on the project.
Uh also, um. The website is up on Penn Dot's website, it has the same boards, the same information on it, it also has the comment form. Um if any of your neighbors weren't able to attend, they can go on the website, see the boards, they can also leave the boards here.
Yeah.
Um for anyone that wants to schedule with you guys to come in and look at them. Um. Yeah, and the the website will be up for the next thirty days, I believe, um. Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can make some copies of uh.
He was the guy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Well, this one, there's nothing new. All right, next item, uh Chief, if you wouldn't mind, please giving us your uh uh report. We we moved you up to the front, so you don't have to sit here.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For that. So in April, we responded to a total of sixteen incidents. Of those in Marion Township, we had four MBAs, motor vehicle accidents, had four medical assist calls, two for tree down. And then we had six mutual aid calls outside of our township. Of those, five were for structure fires, and one was for a brush fire. Also, we just recently had our pork barbecue fundraiser, so thank anyone who showed up for that, we sold five hundred and seventeen meals, which.
Wow.
Is a record for us.
Wow.
So, yeah, thanks to everyone for that. Um just uh as a way of information, we just received a deposit from the state grant from last year. Which was almost thirteen thousand dollars with that, and some additional funds. We purchased two. Uh twenty inch battery powered exhaust fans, so we don't have to run generator to ventilate buildings, and they're quite a bit more compact and lighter to move around. We also replaced our. Uh some of our supply hoses, three inch supply hose, which was about forty years old, it was way past time to replace. It's not something to use a lot, but we did replace that, so now all of our hoses. Uh within, replaced within the last five years, so we.
Wow.
We we finally got that done, we've been working on that over the time, and we also got some other. Some other parts with that order, uh one was a different suction strainer to use to strap water. The total expenditures was just over nineteen thousand dollars, so we put about six thousand dollars of our own money with the state grant money to purchase. Much needed hose and some much better fans, so anyway, thanks again for all the support.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I want to say thank you specifically to you, the the fire police for helping out with the car shelf, it was it was great to have Mary.
Yeah. It's nice, it's really nice, thank you so much. All right, next item, Act five thirty seven, we have uh nothing new to discuss on this issue, any concerns, Jesse?
Not yet.
Anything, Colin? Nothing?
Nothing.
Uh so the next item is the pumping of the septic system. Uh we were talking about this at the workshop meeting, uh what we need to do to enforce enforcement of the residents that have or have not on their septic system pumped out. We've Hydrater is working on a letter that we could get out to the public.
Yeah, I hope this to get better.
Yeah, okay.
Force suppliers.
Okay, so please, you know, June, with with the warmer weather, it's a lot easier to have your system pumped and cleaned out. Um as it gets colder, it's it's more difficult for the guys to do that, so, and it's much easier to inspect at that time, so please continue to comply. All right, next item is the restoration of the uh building at four twenty Water Street. Um and we're working currently with Practical Preservation Services, this is Danielle Kepnerling with Dana Clark and Tippets Weaver Architects. Uh we had received a quote originally, is this correct, Jesse? Um between eight thousand nine hundred five, five hundred, eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and ten thousand seven hundred dollars. But the quote was contingent on a floor plan, so our new quote floor plan is between eleven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Jesse, I think it was you in contact with them, that if we're willing to do some of the legwork, like taking measurements of the roof, that price will come down, so.
And Matt, Matt was nice enough to reach out from the public to actually Dana and discuss.
My name was mentioned in the in the bid that you got.
Okay.
Is okay, I'm I'm.
So, so what, I I guess I'm I'm a little bit confused, I remember the original one, but this one.
The original ones didn't include any floor.
Right, right.
This concludes, this includes a floor plan.
So so do we have a detailed quote, was it in that packet, Lisa? I apologize, I did not review that before coming here.
And this already passed contingent if we had the money in the.
Okay.
So.
Okay, if you guys are comfortable with it, then um I'll make the motion then to approve of a quote for. Yeah, quote include, which includes a floor plan for Practical Preservation Services to perform the quote. From up to fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, is that clear enough?
Yeah.
Motion made made by Irene, seconded by Peter, we're on call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I I didn't want to interrupt.
Thank you.
Motioning is. Um. I I don't know that a floor plan at the initial outset is is going to be required, but I think what really needs to be addressed. Is the deficiencies that you've identified.
Yeah.
Um so the mold uh report uh didn't seem to be uh too alarming. Uh I I got a FOIA request and got color copies at twenty five cents a piece.
Right.
And there's a lot of green and yellow and a little bit of red.
Right, but the problem with the mold was it was making us sick.
Well, I I I can sure understand that, and and uh I've been through a number of remediation processes. Uh I was on the board of of the Burke's Historic Trust, uh there was a five hundred year flood. Uh I had to deal with all of the uh insurance adjustments and so forth. President of the board, uh and also the remediation, so uh that's pretty clear cut, that there are companies that do that.
Yeah.
Uh it wasn't Burke's Fire and Water, whatever that that outfit is, uh they did the work for us down there. Uh but I can find that out, there are companies that do that. Uh the biggest concern.
It's a comprehensive package, that's the problem, yeah.
Again, that's not part of what you just approved.
So it it is sort of like.
Yeah.
We're not actually doing the act of taking care of the building, so this this study is they're going to go top to bottom on the building and identify is there problems with the walls, is there problems with the roof, is there problems with the foundation?
The aspect of the wall, um I had a a contracting business for some time and did some work on the building. Uh that was ten years ago, and at that point, we talked about that wall. What I'd like to do would be with Dana, uh or uh an engineer or or an affiliate with him. Uh is try to find a couple of different solutions for that. Uh at the time, I was uh having a a fairly lengthy conversation with a former supervisor. Uh Roy Zartman, who had a a lot of experience, uh I've got a fair amount of experience uh with old structures as well. And our opinion at that time was uh that the roof load was on the sidewall, that the end wall uh could simply be taken out. And replaced with uh aluminum siding.
Well, what we'd like, what we'd like to do, just to kind of bring it up to speed, because. You got it, you let me get here, um is we want to try to save the brick on the wall. And I, yeah, I don't think it's impossible for.
No, certainly not, that was the second thing I wanted to say, uh thank you uh for that, uh a typical process would be to bolt it back. Uh and uh you can do that one of two ways, uh you can either do it above the floor of the second floor and in the attic space. Uh or you can do it below the floor, since that room is never going to be used for anything.
Okay, so so that's where we're stopping.
Yeah.
We want to make the building more usable.
Yeah.
So it's not just repairing what we have and and sticking a Band-Aid on it. We're we're having this agency come in to have us revamp the entire building, so that the entire building is now usable.
The importance to be of a plan building, it probably will change.
Yeah.
Based on initial design or whatever ultimately comes. Based on initial design or whatever ultimately comes is we want them to propose like, this is how you would use the entirety of the space. Cause you don't wanna just leave the second floor largely abandoned anymore. We don't wanna use the township building, all, all of it.
Still, if you look at the way Fleetwood does some things, they have their old schoolhouse and their rooms are all rented. They rented it out to a YMCA for a while that was generating money for the township. They rent office space out in there. They have a courtroom in there. So, I mean, we have a building there that we were using two rooms out of the whole building. The rest was storage. Right? It's not generating anything.
Right, and it was, it's just the efficiency of it. It was so poor, it was unbelievable. And so, so again, it's taking that step back and saying, how can we save that building and make it better for us now and in the future? And that's why we have this company coming in, thanks to Jesse.
And what, and when I talk to Dana, I wanna see, okay, if we do A with the wall, what's it gonna cost? If we do B with the wall, what's it gonna cost? Right, and, and where do you wanna put that load of that second floor? Because if you look at where they park those trucks, they just have metal beams with no footers underneath and that's supporting that floor. That was a load bearing wall. That's just hanging there on those columns. So I wanna see how it's addressed, what would be the cheapest, but not only what's the cheapest, what would make it the most functional?
Yeah, and longevity too.
Cause we don't wanna cheap out, like obviously we wanna be cost conscious, but we don't wanna cheap out for the purposes.
If, if we're gonna do it cheaply and then let's say we can't use the space for a, for a bigger meeting hall or to do something useful with. I'd rather spend the extra money and say, hey, now it's. Right, right, and it's probably.
It's, it's function and function and function, and we want to be able to best serve our community with restoration, if that's the path that the township is gonna go in.
If we're gonna do it, then that's the route.
Yeah.
As this gentleman signed up to be on the committee.
I signed up in February. That was one of the reasons I came over was to light a fire.
Right, you're my first pick, just so you know. I know, it's a saying.
Yeah, all of this is soup to nuts. Everything about the building and some proposals of how best to use, use that sort of L-shaped lay, layout that we have.
Alright, next item then is playground maintenance and equipment. We have a maintenance day set for June twenty-eighth. Please, if anyone wants to come out and help, feel free to do so. Uh, the bleachers are in need of fixing and or replacing. I guess apparently once it wrongs to be diced, um, supposedly. Yeah, okay. Um, mulch and liners need to be ordered. I know Beverly, you had talked about, uh, the liners earlier. Uh, thank you for putting up the dogs must be leashed signs and in the township. Any animal that you are walking on the street has to be leashed and has to be curbed, whether it's your dog, cat, chicken, goat, whatever. Uh, we have a leash ordinance in place. Um, this past weekend, the MTCA, uh, came out and the shingles were replaced on the shed. You and Kelly went out and replaced the shingles on the shed.
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly was.
I'm sorry, I was at work. And at some point, the, the trees near the septic tank needs to be removed and the shed needs to be removed, moved. Okay.
Carl, did you get a chance to talk to Walworths about their forks? Okay, yeah, cause I think that's, that'll be the easiest. We have the equipment to do it, but we don't have forks big enough to be able to pick them up.
I think, I, I think, uh, I let Mary borrow my stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds about right, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Alright, next item is the future planning. We've broken this down into, uh, a five and ten year plan into three categories. Uh, beautification, repainting the crosswalks. Um, yep, we're looking into doing that this, uh, spring and summer. And, uh, we, we'll, we have to get a list from the painting company, what was done last year. And did you ever find that in the system? No, 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 Lisa. Find anything? Okay.
I'm pretty sure I found it when I was like, if I, if I remember tonight, I'll, I'll email it to you.
Alright, this is like a sore point, all the speed problems we have in town. Troy, if I could hit you up for this a little bit. Um, at one point, you had recommended that we might consider closing the entry point eastbound four twenty-two to Main Street. Um, along.
I don't think that's.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that that's gonna happen. Um, Carl had informed us at the last meeting, uh, uh, parking vehicles at an angle on the street is something that we can't do because we don't have the width of the street. And forgive me, that was something we had talked about as far as like the snow removal. Um.
We can, we can, that's still one of the things, but we had discussed that as being a potential way to alleviate some of the traffic or the parking road.
Parking.
It's, it's a no-go. So we're still looking at the internet sides for.
Yeah, open side of the street parking. Um, so Troy, if you have any suggestions for us as to what we can do for traffic calming in town, we still have people speeding through. It's just, uh, it's a, it's an old sad story. And Carl was able to retrieve some of the data from our signs to give us an idea how fast people are going.
Yeah, it was, uh, that was the last one, the, the, the average speed was thirty, thirty-five.
And that's through town itself. The, the, the.
So, so now the one at the end's a little skewed though, because that, that radar sign is placed right where the speed limit changes.
Okay.
From thirty-five to twenty-five.
Okay.
So it's picking cars up going thirty-five or faster than that.
Okay.
Already telling you that they're going, going ten miles over the speed limit at least.
Okay.
So the, the placement of that one kind of skews, it may deter people, you may see it.
Right.
But it skews the data.
Do we wanna move that?
Well, again, just, just the thought process on that one was to sort of slow down people, perhaps something noticeable blinking at you where the, the speed limit changed.
I thought they were gonna be speed bumps. What happened?
So, we were looking at speed hubs, which is still, still a possibility.
Speed tables.
Speed tables.
Um, which is still a possibility that we're looking at. We are looking at doing some of Main Street repaving. Uh, because if we put them on right now, it, they'll just be destroyed in shorter.
We went left and then right.
So, right, so we have some repaving that we're planning.
Yeah.
And then after that, we've can, consider the speed tables.
We can't.
Keep in mind too, when, when, I mean, the condition, the current condition of the road is, should be slowing traffic down.
You, you would think.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
All, all I would caution you is, once that road's repaved, just wait to, to be. I do believe that it is slowing the wages down, but, uh, it's not.
So as soon as it gets repaved, the speed hubs go in the same time, the speed table.
Potentially, yeah.
Essentially.
That's what should be done.
Yeah.
Fit it all as one.
We're pretty close there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, fit it all as one, get it done in one swipe.
Oh, nobody, nobody goes to twenty-five miles an hour.
Well, as soon as you fix that road, somebody's gonna fly.
People are gonna go faster, like Sheridan Road's a prime example. Now that that's smooth, people fly.
Oh, that's just horrible. I can't tell you how many times I've been almost hitting that. Yeah.
Saturday, a guy came down today, he had to go at least ninety.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
At least.
We all, we all know it's a problem. We've all seen it. We're trying to, to work with the engineer to find a solution that'll actually work.
And we get that repaved, Main Street repaved.
It's a dry strip.
Yeah.
Yeah, but another thing is gonna wreck that. All these heavy equipment go up through there. Tractor trailer coming through there. The, uh, landscapers, I don't know why they're coming through the town here.
Well, I, I've seen them already, big rigs coming through town at about fifty-five with a tanker.
Yeah.
And then they're hitting the Jake break to slow down. These roads ain't gonna hold up to that.
No, so they gotta go around.
Forty plus now.
Get you in the town and say, I'm the limit.
Yeah, we, we could close it.
Local traffic zone, they have them now.
Yeah, I know.
Really, yeah, speeding becomes an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
And where are we with having the police actually write a ticket or seven?
The way, the way Main Street is, it's difficult, cause I actually talked to several of the officers on that. They don't have a lot of good spots where they can set up to be able to clock people. So.
Can't they sit in an alleyway, one of the offshoot alleyways? They can block it just, just until somebody comes.
You don't have, you don't have a line of sight to be able to see.
Yeah.
If they have to set the lines a certain distance apart to be able to do the, and Monica's locals can't use like radar or anything like that.
Use radar.
They cannot use radar. It's all, it's all stopwatch.
So if we would go with state police, they could use radar.
Technically speaking, state police could, but getting state police out here.
Here? Oh my god. Yeah. Yeah.
Possibility.
I mean, we could try to ask, talk to them when we think the peak times are, if you could figure out when the peak times are, we could ask. Yeah, yeah, we could ask them and let them know, you know, we could, we could only ask.
Yeah, we, 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 the locals aren't allowed to use like light based or radar based.
Yeah, maybe if we ask and they come out a couple of times, people might say, hey, you know, we got state police out here now with the radar. It might incentivize people to slow down, but.
I feel though, like even if you had the, the police out here, I don't think it's gonna be as much of a scare tactic as what I think. People might stop for a little bit. Then as soon as they realize that the police aren't there, they're just gonna go back to it.
Buy a black and white car instead of.
Yeah.
Way to do it.
Maybe we could get a grant to buy an old police cruiser.
Yeah.
I'd see in random towns, they use extra big speed limit signs with orange triangles on the corners.
Yes.
Well, I think people, people are aware of the speed limit.
Again, yeah, Troy, if you've got any ideas, throw it our way, let us know.
What I'm, I'm telling you about the speed hubs too, is I don't think they're gonna solve all of the issues. You're gonna end up, there's you got a plowing issue, that's the speed hubs. You're gonna have drainage issues because it's gonna block the drainage. So you got a drainage issue and then you're also gonna have issues where cars won't care.
Yeah.
And they will go airborne. And so.
So now my question is, with a speed table, like when you're looking on Main Street, there's a pretty big shoulder on each side.
People could.
The speed tables don't need to go all the way to the curb on each side for the drainage blocking. They can go.
I don't know if you'd wanna do it that way. I, I see where you're coming from.
I mean, because then people are gonna park over top of part of the, the speed.
The other, the other problem is if we have speed tables only down the middle and there's no parked cars there, people are just gonna go around them.
Yeah.
At high speed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All like it is bad. Uh, either way, there is, at this point in the brainstorming phase, there is no bad idea. Pass it out there, we'll try to figure out something that sticks. Yeah, there's not gonna be one silver bullet. We need to, we need to figure out the combination of things to try to get the best.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, yeah, just strategically place a problem.
Next item is, uh, considering bike trails. Peter had, uh, talked about this briefly at the workshop meeting. It's something we'd look at in the park and in town, and there may be grants available for that.
The other thing was, I know John kind of took that away to look at it, is trying to find, uh, any properties that, about the Tulpahockin.
Yeah.
That we could get. Creating recreational areas to be able to have people enter the Tulpahockin for fishing or doing or whatever.
Yes, yes. So, so there are some properties on Canal Road, um, that we may take a look at as far as access, that are access.
One, the one that's condemned, the people are still actively using the garage, but the house hasn't been occupied for.
Yes. So, and, and we could ask you about that, Colin, how we might go about asking a homeowner if they would.
So the, the interesting dynamic on this column is John was in contact with somebody from the state, and if the person is not using the property. Uh, right now they're using their garage, but if they were to say stop doing that, the state would buy it from them and turn it over to the township as recreation space. The state is willing to do that, we just have to have the, the property owner essentially sort of meet a criteria of non-use. So, I guess Irene's question, my question too is
How do we do?
How do we approach the person to say, hey, we have this idea for, you know, using the space, but it would require, you know, the state buying the property from you?
Mm-hmm.
And to do that, you'd have to stop, you know, using your garage. How, how do we, how do we frame that and, and actually talk to the person about that? Cause it's kind of a, you have to, you have to, it's not a question, you have to make a delicate approach. You don't have to give me an answer right now, but.
A, a well-written letter?
Yeah, 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 realistically, but.
Please, please. I guess, I guess, uh.
There's, there's a unique opportunity there where we could effectively.
So, so, so the property owner has to stop using the garage.
Correct.
The state will buy it and then dedicate it to the township.
Correct.
Is he using the garage right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I, John sees him over there once, every once in a while, and every once in a great while, I have the, the timing of driving pass. And he just, I think he's using it like a storage shed. Like he just comes and goes out of the garage and throw stuff off, pick stuff up kinda deal. It's very seldom, but it is still used.
The house is just coming, it's just sinking into. Yeah, a long time. Yeah.
So, opportunity there that we can put in.
I guess.
When, when it comes to a condemned property, now, is there any kind of cap on that? Is there a time that they have to eventually tear it down? Or can they just let it sit there forever?
Great question, but.
What, what's, what's that?
Though, if a property is condemned
well, it.
For a certain amount of time.
Or not habitable.
It was condemned. There was a condemned notice on it, yeah.
Okay.
Typically goes on a blighted properties list.
But the, it's the garage that's not.
Well, the house, the house is pretty much shot.
It was a double wide, I think.
If you can give us some feedback on that, I'll ask John to speak, uh, to whomever he spoke to previously at the state, see if they have any other guidance as well.
It's typically when a property is condemned, I believe the cone officer notifies the county because then it's placed on a blighted properties list.
Okay.
And then the county deals with it accordingly.
Correct.
Tip, tip, typically, typically, the redevelopment authority um, condemns the house and redevelops the site as affordable housing.
But because of.
That process takes time.
But because of the location, um, you can't do anything with that. You should, um, it, it's, yeah, it has to be up on stilts and because it's, uh, it's not flood plain. There was something.
It's only like two acres or something.
There was something about the property that I know.
An acre, yeah.
Uh, you, you, you would have to put the house up on stilts, but I don't think there could be any new construction in that area. I apologize, I know John has the details on that because he's the flood plain manager too.
refer to like Troy or SD or, yeah, Hydrater, but if you were to try to build or rebuild on that property, you will not be able to put a, a system.
Oh, yeah, that would be adequate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But either way, you know, like I said, don't have to answer now, but there's a kind of, he spitballed that and John looked into it. There's some, we have a, a unique opportunity.
The real answer is ultimately, it's the property owner's choice, right?
Yeah.
Un, un, unless the township wants to exercise eminent domain.
I really, I'm super comfortable with doing that, but for example, he's just using like a storage shed and it's like, hey, the state's willing to buy it and you'd be able to find like have a storage shed somewhere else for like now until the end of time. And if you're using it to go fishing, you can still do that, cause it'll be public access.
Yeah.
It might be in his best interest to, to, to do that, but he may have no idea that that option's even on the table.
Alright, so it's getting a little bit more information from John, crafting a like homeowner, making sure we have a, or definitely don't intervene. We need to call him before we would take any further action on that. Okay, got it. You got that summary? It's on, it's on the microphone.
Yeah, it's on it, yeah.
They forget we're part of Burke's County though, I think.
Well, the only reason I say that is because I remember, it was probably about ten years ago, my first dog, I remember walking down Canal and seeing the condemned notice on the building. I remember reading it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that was there, like there were condemned notices when I first moved out here in like twenty twelve.
Yeah, this was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen roughly when I.
Yeah.
And nothing has ever happened. It, maybe it's not on the county's radar.
Okay, okay. So, alright, so we have a little bit of homework on that then. But I do like your idea, Peter, that would be really nice to have access points to Tulpahockin and this way people aren't trespassing on other people's properties. What you got, Matt?
We allow people to park and access the Creek and Fish Commission property, uh, on our property.
Yeah.
It is a night.
Yeah.
Uh, maintenance, uh, just, there's, uh, more horses asses than horses in the world.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, and they seem to like to fish and they seem to like to.
Crash.
kayak.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're always picking up, uh, one ten head left his pace though.
Wow, wow.
The, uh, uh, he got cited, but, uh, they're, uh, it, it's one more headache that you're.
It's.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have the park, it would just be another access point, cause we have a problem people trespassing on our property. Everyone along the Tulpahockin Creek has problems with people trespassing. We had some naked guy running around in our yard one year. That was, yeah, yeah. My children were out back playing. Yeah, yeah, that was a very interesting day. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, everyone. Yeah. Alright, uh, the next item is the short and long term rentals. Uh, we have created a letter, um, thanks to Dan. Uh, we've identified properties that we think may be rental properties. If you're, everyone's approval, we're gonna send out a letter to the, uh, property owners to identify which properties we, we need to, uh, send notification or identify as rental properties. That was so repetitive, I'm sorry.
It's short.
Yeah.
So I'd like to speak about.
Okay.
You folks charged me with the task of going through and trying to identify those people who own properties that may be renters. And you gave me a copy of a letter. And you gave me a copy of a letter that you're going to send out to those folks. And you always told me, Dan, if you have a better idea.
Absolutely.
Or something different, please present it, so.
Okay.
Have you all seen her letter?
Yes.
Yeah, we've all seen Irene's letter.
Okay. I spent some time on my computer and I came up with a few things and questions. And this is a copy of my letter in comparison to. The letter that the township wants to send out. I find that my letter is more informative. Because we specifically state. The address in concern. As opposed to just general.
Okay.
And. That is already in my computer and all I have to do is go to the next person. And plug in. The next address. And just print out the form.
If you wanna do that, I'm fine with that.
And then, then it prints a letter.
Take a, a little bit of upfront effort, but you could do this as a bail merge.
I'm sorry?
Do this as a bail merge, that if you have these in a spreadsheet, that you just have the fields here for like address, number of units. Um, and then like the, the mailing address, if you just hit right.
Well, you're a lot smarter than me.
You don't have the little detach here with the scissors?
I didn't have the scissors. I laid my big scissors down there and it, it didn't fit.
That's okay. That's, that's the only thing I would do is just write detachment, but thank you, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I, I.
He included the address, yeah. Yeah, that's the only difference.
I think it's important to be specific.
I, I agree with you, so email me the, the file you have it all, so you, well, give me the, the list of the properties.
I can't.
Well, see, that was another thing.
That's fine.
This is the, this is the list.
Yeah.
Specific.
Yeah.
That she asked me to go through and make a spreadsheet on.
Yeah.
And I felt that was just duplicating a second thing that didn't need to be done. Go through it the first time, create the letter, create the envelope, and you're done.
Well, the only reason I wanted a spreadsheet is you could check off who responded.
I can check it off on here too.
Okay.
Just make a check mark. Uh, my question to you, sir. It's a legal question, I, I don't know if you want to answer it. I'm just teasing with it. Uh.
Actually, he didn't because this is worked on on behalf of the township.
Are we legally allowed to ask for contact phone number and an email address?
Yeah.
You can? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
People don't have to provide it.
I mean, that type of information is requested on, on every.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's just a question.
If you figured a way to plug in the addresses. Yeah.
Yep. I mean, person gets this, they still don't have to fill it out.
Right.
They can toss it in the trash.
And then they can get a notice of violation, but they don't follow our rental organizations.
I like this though, because they can say, oh, wait, they do know something, right? Versus just a generic out.
Yeah.
Outreach.
The problem I had is.
This kind of puts in their mind that there's a target.
Right. But the problem I had was entering the address.
No, that, that's fine. If, if he knows how to do it, great, yeah. And, and if he knows an easier way. I'm sure he'll show you.
If it's in a spreadsheet, I could get it so that it doesn't have the envelope all the way.
You do your computer thing. I just couldn't figure.
The problem is, you have to have a printer that's capable of doing both things.
Yeah.
My printer at home, I have to take paper out, put the envelope in, take the envelope out, put the paper in.
Does all the envelopes all at once, all the paper all at once. It doesn't have to jock you back and forth.
Well, you have to change the address on each one, but, yeah.
Well, what I'm saying with the bail merge is you wouldn't have to do that. If you have a spreadsheet, it would just spin them all out. It would go, okay, this first one is this person, the second one's this person. Is. But again, it's been a little while since I've done it, but that tons of places uses, like the decade exists, use this because they're not gonna take the time to type out. Everything, just single files.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could, send me an email of that, that letter and I'll do a little formatting on it.
It needs to be in Times New Roman.
Yeah. She's, she's getting it going, Dan.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you.
Email me that and I'll, I'll do a couple of things on it.
Thank you, it's fine.
I just felt it needed to have more information, which really pinpoints.
Yeah.
The person, we know you.
Right. But, but the pro, I could tell you, I sent out a form letter to residents and I got a lot of feedback that people were very angry. Um, even though it said, dear residents, they were very angry that they felt targeted, even though it was just a form letter that was sent out to a multitude of residents.
Yeah.
So.
Well, here we're even very.
Yeah, right, right. You're gonna, you're gonna get phone calls and complaints, so I apologize, Lisa.
I like.
Yeah.
I missed it because I was making copies.
That's okay, that's alright. Hey, I'm glad, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. If you, I, I just couldn't figure out an efficient way of doing it, you did, I appreciate it. Yeah.
It's so simple, I just went, take this address out, put the next one in.
Hey, kudos to you, I was just trying to save time, but thank you.
And I couldn't stay making a spreadsheet when I already account all that information right here.
If you have a spreadsheet though, then you can.
I don't have a spreadsheet. I'm not doing double work.
Why I wanted a spreadsheet is that we could have it in the computer and we could check off on it and it could be followed.
Yeah.
And so year after year, if there's a change, we could update that spreadsheet.
The other side is I would have to take Dan down for his paper copy.
Right, right. So that was the only reason I wanted a spreadsheet, because again, it's data that we do need to track over time.
We don't have to do it this, this way. Get entered in later, but I think.
Right.
I think, I, I like having digital copies of things to run their different system. Too, like, I, I see your point of not doubling up the work.
Yeah, yeah, just right now, it would be duplicated.
If we double, if, if we do it now, it won't effectively double the work, it'll actually be reusable for future time.
First is implement, first is to implement it, right? And then the next thing will be to get it, you know, well, not even enforcement, it would be, you know, to get efficient at it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so implementing, let's implement it, then we'll work on the efficiency part.
Rob, Rob wasn't built for that, right?
And so.
So the letter that you did.
Just with some revision for Dan, from Dan, yeah, including the address a little bit more specific, that's all.
But then Dan's gonna send it to Peter and then he's gonna leak it a little bit and.
Have the little scissors. Detach here.
Yeah.
Guys, again, people aren't going to, I know it's silly, but if you have that and you have that dotted line, people will detach it. Alright, are we okay on this motion? Are we okay on this then? Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve of the rental property. Letter as revised by Dan. To identify rental properties in the township.
Motion made by Irene, second by Peter, we'll call Peter, Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
The next item is the joint comprehensive plan. Um, this is the Western Berks Joint Comprehensive Plan. Uh, that we had discussed, I think the estimate was a little bit over eight thousand dollars. I forgive me, I forgot what the conversation was, where we were at on this particular issue previously. There was something else about the cost estimate needs to be reviewed. Is there anything further on that from you? Wait, I thought the, the estimate.
I know, I know, we were waiting upon the cost estimate from the county plant commission.
Okay. I thought, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was just like a little over the.
Paul, Paul might have missed it, they shut us.
Okay, I think it was a little bit over eight thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken. Alright. Next item is road maintenance. Uh, we're working on creating a five-year maintenance plan to get the roads fixed and maintained and to be on a preventative cycle. Which includes cleaning the culverts and so Carl has been spearheading that for us.
Carl, Carl obviously has this year's stuff. I talked to Carl separately, we're gonna start putting together. Uh, items for twenty twenty-six that would be either ready to go out to bid in January.
Excellent.
And also laying out the potential candidate roads for twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty.
Can you guys hear Peter? So, so they're talking about um doing year after year. Spearheading the plans for the next five years, as I said before, so they're already like. Yeah, there is, uh, will that amplify you or no? It's just for recording purposes, so, yeah, we, it's not the amplification system. Yeah, I, I apologize, I'm sorry, I'm just kinda winging it here. Alright, the next item is the GIS system. Um, we've already uh, uh, started on this. Again, this is a Carl thing, thank you very much. Um, this, we have previously approved uh for the seven hundred dollar yearly hardware and thirty-two hundred dollars for phase one. A base map is created and the information leaves are being added. A preliminary live map should be available. Now or soon uh to test drive?
Probably.
Okay, yeah.
The preliminary map is available and ready as test drive. And it looks like there's a discussion point on Gemma's place of software.
I need to use a Russian.
Yeah, well, that should be able to run, like whether it's this one or the other one. It should be able to run the GIS system.
Correct.
He, he's losing his voice more over here.
Yeah, so it really comes down to um.
Solve, solve IT to install it.
Oh, okay, so that's your, okay.
The, the IT company, they unfortunately blocked uh anybody installing anything. Yeah, uh, it was, yeah.
Nah, nothing.
They need, they need to install it, but the laptops should be able to, to run it without any issue.
Correct. And you, you were able to get it purchased. And software and everything.
Yeah, I think, I believe that was purchased, yeah.
No, it didn't. You gotta download it and everything and we can't do that.
Are they gonna give you a discount?
Well, I'll, I'll make sure that we get the municipality.
You should get a discount.
We, we need to solve IT to give one of us administrative credits. I could just take care of this. Uh, yeah, that, that's the bottleneck, because we need the software to physically be installed, but we do have. Uh, water that the other laptops should be there in the near future, though both of those machines will run it, no problem.
It should be a floating software license online, so as soon as you get the software and everything's downloaded, if you want, I can come over, we can kinda. Test drive it, you'll give comments, I'll take them back to Steve and then.
Is this expense in this year's budget?
Yes. Okay. And this, the thirty-two hundred was in, in the budget this year, in part of the road, like appropriate stuff, and that, that's a one-time fee.
Yes, was sufficient.
Yeah. I, I like giving detail.
Don't want you to talk too much.
Alright, agenda item number twelve, Sheridan Road South and Drainage and Payment Improvements. Sheridan Road South from William Penn Boulevard to Lebanon County, special meeting was held on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to award bids.
Yeah.
Skip to the bottom.
Yeah, the contractor.
So that was part of the problem that Al had brought up earl- earlier.
Yeah, this is, this is the drainage problem. And that's the engineer he's hearing.
Oh, oh, Sheridan, oh, forgive me, forgive me. Oh, so the milling's on the side of the road.
Yeah, so, um, I've been out there a couple times with our inspector out there, my contractor, uh, last week. Um, it's, it's clear from tire marks going across the shoulder. But the tires of vehicles are repetitively going onto the shoulder and actually dragging the, the stone onto the. Onto the uh. Really, the only way to avoid that is to widen the road or widen the paving. Um, because when you have the lanes at what they are, eight foot, you get. Let's say a piece of farm equipment and a bus, a school bus passing each other, they can't fit on that road at the same time.
Right.
Um, and so. In addition, you do have a lot of higher velocities now.
Yes.
Uh, which is, I, I think causing them to kinda cut, cut through there. Uh, we did get um, an estimate from the contractor to stabilize the shoulders, which I'm not a hundred percent sold on his. Stabilization, but his estimate is about ten thousand dollars. Um, and I'm not sure that what he's proposing is actually gonna do anything different. It's basically putting more stone on the shoulders and the problem. Problem is keeping the tires and the cars popping.
So, so with your experience, what can we do for speed, speed mitigation on that particular road? Because now they're starting to go over in there for the speed issue and drag the stone. Other issue we have is, you know, the farmers are going through there with their cultivators and they're running them low on their hydraulics, right? And then they're scraping that into the road as well. So what would be your recommendation on speed mitigation at least for that?
But the potholes back.
That, that didn't solve the problem either, but.
Man, you guys charge a lot of money to tell me to put potholes in the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Cause I know, I know in areas you can't put speed tables, we had that conversation at the workshop meeting.
But we can't put signs saying slow down, curve ahead, yeah.
I mean, you could potentially put the.
Yeah.
Narrow room or something.
Yeah, but the, the, you know, the speed uh flashing sign, the one that actually tells them how fast they're going. But without enforcement, it's not gonna.
Yeah, do anything.
They're not even gonna read it.
Right.
So, so again, it's a police conversation we have to have, alright.
So, one of the reasons why that road is the way that it was with shoulders is because they built up. From where it was and then backfilled, you know, the shoulders because there wasn't enough pavement. There to really do any milling system. You're gonna run into the same problem on school road. Uh, with, with the, the current project or current uh proposed project. So we're, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Sheridan and trying to figure out how to solve that at the same time with putting the specs together and. For, for school roads, you don't end up with the same, same problem.
Okay.
Basically, the, the, the lanes are too narrow, the road is too narrow, you can't fit those, the large vehicles. You know, passing each other simultaneously on those curves and they're just. Aside from the speeding, you're getting a lot of, a lot of wheels going on those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then this gentleman has a question in the back row.
I tried with that road, Dan, um, when you say with the large vehicles, is there any way the, the counties, the townships, there's, there's a county divide right there. Can work together to share the calls to that road? Or does it stop right at that bridge where Lebanon County ends and we begin? Farmers that are going cross-county there.
Yeah.
I try with that road a lot, as, as most of us do, and I know, I slow down because I gotta, I gotta chuck and I know I gotta hug the turns because I've come across that one farmhouse, it's, I mean, it's scary.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get sideswiped, I mean, is there something that would?
You're talking about to widen the road?
The wide, but the, the leading cost just on one township, the burden of one township to share it with the other.
Each, each segment is basically.
It, the problem is on our side of it, yeah, Mill Creek doesn't care. Yeah, Mill Creek's.
Like, if, if they need to widen on the Bell Creek Township side, that would be something they'd need to work with.
You put a limitation on width of the road and the. You don't see the semis that are getting water on the back there, limit's not coming down that road. You got people normal, don't complain about that.
Yeah.
You gotta be, put a, put a limitation.
Yeah, I, I think that might be, a, a potential solution is limit the size of the vehicles on the road.
It has to be enforced.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's the trick.
And then we're gonna have every farmer angry at us and.
Well, it's not just gonna be the farmers, it's gonna be.
Tractor trailers, yeah.
Maybe that'll get the farmers in here, they want representation, they'll, they'll start to get to the field.
Yeah.
It, it's such a dangerous road though. Yeah, I go on that road a couple times a week.
Contractor was saying to put bigger stones down.
More, just more stone. Doing that, you still need to stabilize it and really what they were gonna do is grind, grind the um. The edge of the new pavement and put additional stone and try to kinda lock it in. I don't like their solution, I don't think it's gonna do anything unless they're using grinds with some sort of binding oil.
Yeah.
To lock in the shoulder, which is what Carl and I talked about probably a month ago, a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
Is he can go out there and spray it, but it's gonna be one of those things that it's gonna be a reapplication process, he's gonna have to do more than once. Um, so we'll. I, I wanna see what other potential solutions that, that I can have um. Without having the, the contractor involved and looking at getting a ten thousand dollar loan, so.
Thank you, thank you.
You know where the water comes from when it comes done, uh, good man's street where they put those new.
That's, that's the next item, that's, we're doing it, yeah. So Troy will wait for some more feedback. Yeah, yeah.
Water gets there.
Yeah, no, that's that's.
Problem is so easy to to strain out.
So that's the next item we're gonna discuss is the Marion Drive, and that was for. Um. My god, my brain is just.
The stormwater.
Yes, yes, thank you, of the next page there. Yeah. Okay, so all the all the paving has been completed on that particular project, but we after the fact during a heavy uh rainstorm, we noticed that there was. Uh drains that went on to uh personal property, so. Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, so so the contractor is in, well, just he just said, contractor's planning on going out there to. Uh reevaluate that and clean up the shoulders and it's and uh to figure out what they can do to redirect that water.
I I know this would be a big cost, but wouldn't it just make more sense to repave that section and pitch the road towards the drains instead of putting the drains in the crest of the road? Cause they're actually in the crest of the road, the water rolls to the drain, not into the crest, it's not.
Again.
Well, they're not, they're not in the fully in the crown of the.
Right.
There enough into it, there's not gonna get any.
Keep you honest here, there was fiber optic cable.
Yes.
There was some sort of fiber optic that I don't know anything about, but I know they had to relocate.
So again, it's it's an engineering problem, yeah.
And and the 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 drains. The drains. Are a little misleading because they. There was never a gutter on. The the edge of that road, there still isn't a gutter, there's not, wasn't one clan, there was no flow line trying to connect well to those drains. It it appears that the drains are really capturing minimal amount of water, the the whole purpose of that whole drain system. Was capture the water off of four twenty two coming down off the side into the inlet that's right there.
Okay.
And those two inlets that are mid block. Were now like junction structures and where they're placed, they're not really intended to capture more water.
Okay.
It was, it was easier to install rated inlets to have to potentially capture even a little bit of water. And use them as junction structures for when they put the the uh drain inlets on the other side of the road.
Okay, so it's just deceiving to the average person like, hey, there's these drains here, but why is the water flowing out and flowing off onto someone's property? It's what their their purpose actually is is something than what the average person would judge them to be.
I mean, I've never seen any water flying off of four twenty two and rolling down that street, though, that's.
Yeah.
It's always starts on that street.
I mean, we have been having heavier rains too.
Okay.
So there used to be a head wall.
Okay.
Before the alley, the little alley. So there was a head wall there and there was a pipe that went under the alley and then it was dead end, it went into her yard and dead end. There was no outlet of that, and so all of that water was. Coming surface street and going into her yard anyway. All of the water coming off of that car lot, if you will, that was also rolling off and going into her yard, it goes straight across the alley. There is nothing that changed any of that flow. The only change to. Near the corner there at four twenty two and Marion was the head wall and the drainage inlet is now moved out in the road and. I need to see it when it's when it's raining heavy to see if that is.
Give me your number, I'll call you.
Yeah.
I mean, I I feel bad for Marion Keppley, because I feel like I'm in Louisiana when I look underneath her tree over there.
Yeah. 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 It was quite severe.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Different than it was.
Than it was before, okay.
All of the grades of her her yard staying, her yard is lower than the road. The 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 road itself did not change geometry, the only thing it did was cut in. A couple of drains and really connected the pipe from four twenty two all the way back to to Main Street. Which is carrying flow in a pipe now that was on the surface and in her yard. So I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain that it's worsened the condition. I do know that there is flow coming across. Marion from the other side of Marion that if it. Pawns high enough, it'll it'll breach the crown and go into her yard as well. That can be solved by putting the inlets on the other side, which should have been done with this project, I'm not a hundred percent.
So here's my concern, right, so. Where I live, if if I park my car in the street, right? There is about four foot of water. Right at the bottom of that crest of where my cars are parked.
Four foot wide.
Four foot wide, not deep, right, but it's rolling down Main Street and it's all rolling down towards. Where those drains are at.
Correct.
But they're they're not even capturing that water, is the worst part.
But there, there is no flow line to get it there.
So technically, we should have put a drain. In line with what's rolling down Main Street versus putting that drain section.
There's there's a catch right at the corner of Marion.
It's it's never gets there, just for some reason, it's just rolling right by and.
Yeah. Yeah. I took pictures, not brought pictures up here, what's.
But you watched how how the water comes down Main Street right past my house, I got that much.
From the beginning. You you know where the water comes from? It's not from four twenty two, it's not from the 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 old the dentist place. It's you you know the apartment house there at the corner?
So I don't live down there, I can only speak for the water I see in front of my house coming down Main, right, so I don't know, so I gotta take.
I gotta listen. So the water comes from those apartment houses. From beyond that.
So that would be four four twenty two then.
Now four twenty two.
No, it comes behind, and that's what I was saying, that there is a low spot in the road. And you can see where it's gonna come across behind the apartments and. Once it, once it pawns up enough in on that side of the road, it's gonna breach the crown and go on the other side.
Okay, cause that I've never seen, cause I never looked at.
Can we ask you to come?
I made a suggestion to put the dirt that went down to the road. With the grater, put the dirt back up where it belongs, and then the water go right down to the drain. Without any problem.
Yes.
But now we spend all this money. Which don't, none of the water goes in the drain.
Correct.
It goes right.
So is that a, is that a property owner issue that? The drainage thing, can't they build a retaining wall with drainage pipes that lead?
Yeah, but it's not really on there.
So who's right away is that, is that ours or is that?
You have right away there. Um and the the shoulder. The shoulder is, it's basically grass, right?
Okay.
And you have a grass shoulder and you could turn that grass shoulder into a stone shoulder, you could make a little. Rolled curb, you know, asphalt curb. I don't know that that property owner is gonna like whatever you do with it, that's gonna change the property as she currently has it. Now, she's been mowing, as far as I understand, and Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but she's been mowing the grass all the way up to the paved area, which is. Technically, she's been mowing grass that's in in the townships right away. What what I talked to the contractor about doing is. Creating a a a small berm. With grass, you know, with with turf and grass so that it would push that water and keep it out of her property. Even if it's six inches high, right, that small berm, it's gonna keep it in the road, because six inches is higher than the crown. Right?
Okay.
So it'll keep it in the road and whatever it can capture, it will go in the drains or move it down to the drains near the corner. And and that he's he's in agreement that he's okay with that, but that that may take coordination with the township with her. Just because it's going to change.
To change her yard.
It's gonna change her yard, she can still mow it, it's just gonna, she's gonna have to wait until it regrows the grass, because once they put a berm. And we'll try to make it, you know, smooth enough that she's not. She's not bottoming out the blades of the mower uh on that burn, you know what I mean, it make it, make it a nice transition as opposed to a a big.
To to segue your point with Main Street, that that captures a Marion Keppley's house. If it's not making it down there, there might be something that the engineers look at and see if we can stub another. Pickup further down.
Yeah. That that might be an issue too, yeah, that would actually be helpful, because it it would stop if we make it to that corner then.
Bottom bottom line, though, is we need to make sure that we're able to get the water that's on the road off the road.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And we have.
If they put the good up through that with the grater, you don't have to do none of this work here, all that water comes down the road, it don't go across the road, it goes right down to the drain. Five minutes with a grater and it'll be over.
Well, I guess we're gonna give the contractor the opportunity to remedy this, we could see, we'll revisit it once the work is done and we'll go from there. Yeah, and you guys let Troy know about the other issues that are on Main Street and we'll look into that as well.
Yeah, I I think I've seen the other issues that you're referring to, because. Where the drain is on the corner is probably at the limit of your right away, but the paved area goes beyond that. And it falls off, right?
Right.
So. The only way to kind of keep it there is to, again. Put like a berm or edge or even if it's just a small asphalt berm, kind of keep it up there before it goes down.
Cause that that drain where Marion Keppley's in front of her garage there, but that would have been moved, like, let's say you're at the alleyway here, it would have been moved on this side. It would have stopped all that water that's coming down all of Main Street from even making it down there. There's a lot of water there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot.
We're looking at the water problem.
I can't make it, I can't park my car in the street and make it across without literally getting it all the way to my ankle. And that's four feet, I can't hop that good, even with a a good foot.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's it's a significant amount of water. But there's no drains on Main. Yeah.
Okay.
I walked in with Carl too.
Yeah.
I walked in with the contractor and I walked in with Paul.
Yeah. So Peter's just saying we're gonna add this to the list of things to 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 look at and review then.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to move on then guys? Thank you. All right, the next item is the Ballinger.
You and I had a conversation that afternoon.
We did.
Yes, we did, we had nights that didn't. Told you what I thought, uh. What contractors say while we we were there with him about. The crown in the road, that crown is much higher now than it was before. And that road slopes right into Marion's property.
Uh the crown hasn't changed, if you go out and you look at the pavement, they didn't pave to the crown. So.
Well, they put a new surface on it.
Not to the crown, it it's only goes out so far and it doesn't go to the middle of the street. And so it doesn't go all the way to the crown, it but there is a low area there that allows that to to.
Well, the distance between the two rigs is the low area that flows into her yard. I won't disagree with you.
Thank you.
Alright.
In front of the social hall, the old uh Marion Fire Company Social Hall, does that ever get cleaned out?
I don't know, and now that that whole lot has that big berm there where that house was, we have like. A nice mud river every time it rains coming down Main Street too. So it's it's been like that for a while, ever since they put the big dirt mound there.
Don't we have the?
Silk socks.
Thank you.
They have some s- some that are left there, um there's not as many there left, but it just goes right over them, because they're just like four inches, three inches.
Problem then, that needs to be addressed.
Look into that for that project.
Cause I I do know that.
Twilight Acres.
The, I think on Main Street.
Okay.
There they don't have sufficient silk socks there, Jesse is saying that when it rains.
Just mud.
Mud from the nerve files just right into the street.
Okay.
When I lived there eighty nine Main Street. I did that. I always cleaned that up, the fire company was supposed to, but they they didn't. So whenever it rained, I made sure that there was. No leaves, no twigs or nothing under that culvert.
Yeah.
And it was, right now, the other day, it was that much water out.
Yeah.
On the road, and that.
We did not have a good culvert cleaning program, yeah, yeah, I think I see Carl writing down stuff on this list, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um well, the cul- culverts are on the street and we have to make sure we keep our culverts clear, because otherwise you're gonna have more uh flooding.
Oh, not in the past.
Yeah. Sure, sure. Absolutely, yeah, you come, you come right up here, Phil, yeah, come right up.
I live at thirty seventh Opview, uh so I came in a student, I'm sorry, late, I was actually coaching. I'm on the board for the Colorado's new soccer club. Um I don't know how many years, past few years, they've been renting out the field up there in Wilmsdorf behind Turkey Hill, the township building is. And we just found out the meeting last night, they're upping the prices. I told them, I said, pull out, it's it's a money grab, it's for the kids, like the field's for the kids, the kids use it, the the softball players that come. Adult ladies, they use it, we're the only ones that use the soccer field, we pay for the lights, we pay electricity bill, they won't have the price. We have other places, so I I mentioned last night, I'm coming to this meeting, to get it out there, because I knew we have land, you guys are looking at, you know, improved stuff, I see something about the bike trails. It's for the kids, I mean, I'm sure none of the legality of it would be, I know they they're charging fifty plus an hour.
We we don't charge.
Charging.
Well, we have to work something out.
Insurance, it's the same thing we do with the Colorado wise, they're a little weak.
Okay, yes, so you guys know exactly.
We just, we just have to make sure that the 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 game times don't conflict with the end, that's it.
Hey, here's what I need.
Yep.
He mentioned something about the field, one field that you guys have is a bit of a slope, but it didn't be the the outfield. Where even, that'd be the smallest, why you twelve and up, they can't, they need more.
Yeah.
But give the kids a place to practice.
It's cool, Lisa, about the scheduling.
And that's something down the road, and you've got enough projects going on, but if we get money coming in, that's something to club, even the nets.
Let me, let me potentially throw this out there, whether it's like the the M T C or whatever, like. If you came to us and said, hey, we want to fundraise to put lights in or something like that.
That's actually what I do on the board, I'm a fundraising guru.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get a crossword out of any of us.
I would love to have more lights in that park, I would love it.
We're gonna fundraise this and we're gonna make it happen, then we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, it seems like from what I see, like within the schedule, you guys are trying to do a lot more in the community. Don't go out in there much, but I know people utilize it, it's taken care of, it's a nice place, you'll get more people that will get the car shit as as well. Keep the club growing, because I, all three of mine have been in, oldest for six years, and we have three hundred kids that are coming in this fall.
Yeah.
So we'd be happy to have you use.
Well, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely, and if you've got other fundraising ideas, we're open ears to that.
And if it's a little two slope, let us know, because maybe we can even talk about leveling it. We got a greater.
What what amount of insurance coverage is, does the township require for a little?
I would have to look, I don't remember.
Yeah.
We are, we're also, we're self insurance.
We we can have them get connected with like Lisa and Irene, because we have all that stuff on file, we just don't have it with us.
Yeah.
So what do I need to do?
Just give the township the officer a call during the week. We'd be happy to have. I'd use the field.
That's great, that's absolutely great.
I would I would love to see more use of that part.
Yeah.
Alright, cool.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. All right, next item is the Ballinger Road fill overflow matter, um there's no uh discussion at this point due to possible litigation.
I'm quick updating during executive session.
Okay, um and sure, sure, uh the next one is the Ballinger Road fill overflow agreement, again, no discussion at this point. Due to possible litigation. Um Peter is uh stepping away at the moment, uh so I'm gonna skip the next item, which is the twenty twenty five uh. Road projects, uh the next item is the uh trash and recycling ordinance, do you have that update for us, Colin?
Yes, why don't, why don't we return to that?
Okay.
Item as well.
Okay. Um. Then, oh, and the next item is trash collection, currently we have J P Mascaro, there's a three year contract, we're currently one year into that contract. Um at the workshop meeting, we were talking about how they previously had discussed that if we put it on our tax bill. Potentially, there is a reduction in the cost to homeowners. Um again, I'm not that familiar with that particular item, is that something that you are familiar with at this time?
Well, we we had. Discussed. At the time of bidding, whether to include. The trash hauler. Sending the bills or the township.
Correct.
Um. Because because it is a significant price difference, and ultimately we concluded that the township did not have the administrative capacity. To send bills on its own, which would also require. My all, frankly, my my office, the township paying my office to file means. Against anyone who doesn't pay, now with that, with that, with that being said.
Yeah.
Um. I I I'd have to to research obviously whether we could actually amend the contract, because that seems like a material term.
Okay.
And and I don't know if we are subverting illegally the the bidding.
Okay.
Laws.
Okay.
By materially amending contract during its term, I I just stand.
Yeah, Peter, uh Colin has an excellent point, I know we had talked about, I skipped over a couple of them. The trash collection, we had talked about during the workshop as far as putting it onto our uh tax bill.
Yes.
What Colin is saying is that can be a contractual issue.
Okay.
Um but he had just.
Well, first, again, you know, yes.
Yeah.
Property does not pay.
Yeah.
You're paying my office to file means against the properties, that's that's one, two is. Under the bidding laws, I don't know if we have the power to materially amend. Two is, you know, under the bidding laws, I don't know if we have the power to materially amend. The contract during its term. Right? I don't I don't know if we're subverting the bidding laws by doing that because it. You know, may, I guess the 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 argument is that another crash law could have said, well, I wouldn't have, you know, maybe bid if. I didn't have to process the bill. So I have to, you know, I could certainly look into that issue.
If if you would.
I just don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Yeah.
So look into it and there may be something there that may not. And we only had the one. Company that it was JP Mascaro that did it. There was no other.
Yeah, and it wouldn't fall under the delinquent taxes as we have for all the others for both the. The per capita and the um, delinquent real estate, it wouldn't fall under that. Aspect of things because we have statewide tax recovery that recovers any unpaid per capita taxes. If it's on the tax bill, would it fall into their realm of chasing people down?
I I I don't, I don't know.
It's too, yeah, it's a big question. Okay.
That was specifically one of the things that JP Mascaro had suggested was like their trash company, they're not a billing company. If you put it like on your tax bill or Marion Township handles the billing of it, it would cut off a substantial amount of the cost.
But we we don't have the manpower for it.
Do it. So if we put it on the tax bill, people are already gonna be, you know, theoretically paying their taxes. If you can look into it. There if we can legally do it. Mascaro was receptive to the idea. We just want to make sure that we're, you know, above board on on every step.
Well, I'm gonna go back to the twenty twenty five road project. Do you have the list of the roads?
Paul.
Paul.
Oh, has the list of roads for this year's project.
And and what do we need to state for this to go out for a motion here? I need to specific on each road? Okay.
They're not ready yet, but if they can uh, take a motion that once they are ready, we can. Get them over to them. If they're acceptable, we can go out and bid. But uh, what I'd like to do is. Get that motion. I'm waiting for approvals from fellow the parents. Uh, some alternative options for uh, school road.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we're trying to make sure that we we get good bids and and bids of.
So these bids that you that we're putting out, they're gonna be for the newer. Um, road spec for the heavier vehicles, right? They're not gonna be for the old Marion Township standard of.
That's one of the, that's one of the things that I'm waiting on approval from private viruses. Getting approval to do the project as. Uh, building up the road as opposed to grinding and then overlaying because there's not enough road bits to to do that. So we need to build up.
What?
And, but yeah, I'm trying to utilize the the. Of the fear spec.
Yeah, which way too expensive.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have the list handy?
I can tell you, we're looking at uh.
Main Street.
Main Street from church down just past Richland Road. Richland, Richland Road from Main Street to the uh, cross pipe before the bridge. Including the cross break because that's kind of. Woods Drive. And School Road from. Roughly from Marion. It'll be a little bit before Marion. Then there's a section that we're gonna skip that was just done for where the culvert was replaced. All the way to. Smalls. Actually, hopefully a little bit past Smalls.
So you feel comfortable making this motion?
I I do.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that? There's a section between the Wyatt School Road and Marion Drive and Marion Drive where it goes up.
Yes, yes.
There's a pretty bad one in there. Is that getting hit as well? Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion. To authorize the finalization of the bid specs with uh, alternative acceptable options and to advertise the projects. For the following roads. Main Street from church to Richland, Richland from Maine, including uh, to and including the cross pipe. Woods Drive. And School Road from Marion, roughly approximately from Marion to Smalls.
Second, thank you. Motion made by Peter, second by Irene. Call Peter. Hi. Jesse.
Hi.
Also, road that was originally included in the list was Canal. Uh, but you wanted to look in doing the the low volume roads.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a meeting set up with Dean Druckenmiller.
Okay.
Uh, to to. Get that going. But that meeting I have set up with him is in uh, November. And we can't apply until January. So I don't wanna make it, I don't wanna make it too soon, but I don't wanna give it too much time either. So. We should be ready almost as soon as the applications open in January to be able to to apply for it.
Okay, yeah, I'd say if we have it designed and ready. Even if we don't get certain low volume gravel roads, we can just put that onto the bid bracket for twenty twenty six.
Yep.
They never have the design and the goal is to always have the design ready to go. Yeah, because we are always behind the eight ball with with all these issues. And now we have Carl. It's like you have a project that you think is done, you get everything done, then something opens up, you can move forward, move forward, move forward.
You have software, you can keep it on the radar.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is, this is the way it should have always have been.
So the plow holes on Richland Road were not doing anything to them.
No, he's he's cold patching.
Yeah.
So I've saved those roads we just mentioned for last. There's still some other roads I didn't get to yet. Uh, that being said, they will have to bid. It's not likely they're gonna pay them in the next month.
Oh, it won't.
Uh, so what I probably will do is some of the bigger. Bigger holes I'll fill. I'm not, I'm not gonna go crazy though because it's it's just gonna get tore up or replaced. You know what I mean?
Right.
Um, but yeah, there's some pretty big, but Main Street's got some that are. Along A Rock, Stasburg Road and the and the shoulder is terrible right before you get to that cul-de-sac, what's Palace size or whatever. Uh, up up towards you, there's a piece coming out as soon as that.
Carl's been out doing a lot of cold patching. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's, there's no shortage of things that need cold patching, but we've been trying to get through it as fast as we can.
That's, that was my. Theory.
Right.
Stuff we're trying to pay. I'll worry about that later. And some of that. They didn't just become the worst roads. So. If they've been banned for a while, some are a little worse, I'm sure. Uh, this freezing thaw we had this year did a number, not only in our townships, but many other ones. Uh, but just bear with us, we're trying to.
Catch up.
We're trying to get things in order for the next several years.
Thank you, Carl.
Will you guys please explain Roadmaster to the residents here?
Okay, so yes, if you look, if anyone wants to look it up on their computer, if you don't have a computer at home. You could go to the public library, you could stop in here, we could probably print up a copy for you. A Roadmaster's position is technically administrative. I know some people get very frustrated when they don't see work being done, but technically the Roadmaster position is administrative. Unfortunately, we don't have much of a road crew, so most of the tasks do fall on Carl's shoulders. But part of that job is also doing classes, training, keeping up to date. With what are current guidelines for road maintenance and other things as we've discussed at the meetings before, such as the park. Um, there's many things, there's many hats that Carl wears as our Roadmaster. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, you can look at the PSAT's website also. You could actually see some of the classes that are offered. Uh, there's the LTAP Local Training uh, for road purposes that are classes. Um, there's all kinds of activities that. We are so blessed and fortunate that Carl is certified in and classes that he attends. So. If you have a question over what the duties are of each and every one of us up here, please feel free to ask. We've had some people call up the office and and start. Yelling at Lisa for no apparent reason. Um, but again, we're doing what we should be doing and. Um, Carl is a highly trained individual for his position as. He is getting the township on track to where we need to be. And we're extremely appreciative of it. So before you get angry, please just speak to us kindly. I'm sure Carl wouldn't mind talking to you, but you could look things up on PSATs and you could look things up on uh, second class township code. Yeah, Google it. Yeah. So, alright, next item is the Trash and Recycling Ordinance. Um, the update. I I have read it previously, it's just been a while.
I I have with me tonight the updated Trash and Recycling Ordinance for a potential enactment. It was duly advertised in the Reading Eagle.
Excellent.
On May fifteenth. Um, as discussed last meeting, it essentially clarifies the intent of existing ordinance. Which is that any residential property with four or less dwelling units needs to participate in our track contract. Those above it um, need to provide proof of of dumpster for trash and recycling. Um, in lieu of a dumpster form or dumpster permit that we had done in the past. Um, it's more, it's it's more efficient for the township just to get. Um, an invoice or proof of payment at the year end. Next year evidencing the dumpster or the. Or any way the trash is being hauled from from a property that's not participating. And so that update to this ordinance has also been made.
And it'll impact us, I believe, with the recycling grant. It'll increase our tonnage perhaps. Because we'll be able to keep track of some of the recycling that is done. It may or may not help with that, so. Yeah.
So I have a silly question for you. Might be silly, might not be. I might have missed it. If uh, let's say I'm doing a remodel of my home, I wanna get a dumpster.
It doesn't impact. No.
I don't need to call in for a dumpster.
Well, it's typically part of building for a process.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've I've actually been through this a couple of times before. So. Uh, the dumpster permit that we had was not for that sort of dumpster. It was if you were gonna permanently have a dumpster, it's like a business or something. You could, you could call up like any any company that's doing that and get a dumpster there. But the only things you'd have to be sensitive to, like Colin said, is like. Billing permit related. And you're gonna put it on like Main Street. There are certain rules about putting dumpster on on right roads, but. Otherwise, yeah, there's, there's no restriction on that.
And businesses have to show proof of trash. Yes, yes, yeah. So that's just the big clarification. The previous ordinance, what was it nineteen seventy nine, I think it was? It just wasn't clear on its face about how uh, uh, other businesses would. Show the township that they do truly in fact have recycling and trash. So this just clarifies the language of it and so that the township can keep track of that, so.
I'm satisfied with what we're reviewing.
I I am, yeah, yeah. Alright, I'll make the motion to enact ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one.
Motion made by Irene, second by Peter. Well, call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Me up tonight, I'm ready to say Peter made the motion.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I am, I'm fumbling left and right and I apologize to everyone. So I'm tired, I've been up since five, so. Alright, next item is the Saldo. We have nothing new on this particular item.
Carl and Troy are actively looking at stuff.
Okay.
Did actually finish looking through that today. I have some notes. I like that lower packs. I have some pretty good stuff in there. I was impressed.
Yeah.
For the guys that took some notes down, we can talk about that then.
Okay.
I haven't actually looked at ours.
Oh, the next item is the Blue Spruce forty four oh five Conrad Wiser Parkway. Nothing new on this item. You guys been in there? It's very nice. Yeah, go go shop. I love to frequent our local businesses. Uh, same thing eighty five Main Street, Twilight Acres, nothing new on this item. We just need someone to go take a look at the. Thank you. I can't remember the name either. Alright. Olden on Sixth. Uh, this is a uh, sixty one single family detached dwelling units. Um, we're in the beginning, they're in the beginning phase of that project. Applicant is requesting a ninety two day extension. That would be August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Uh, for the projects to render a decision on the plan. Anything further on that?
We just have to authorize the the extension because I mean, whether it's. Eighty two days or a hundred and ninety two days, I don't think it really changes anything.
Correct. And I, and I would say that the project is no longer in its infancy. It's probably about fifty percent.
Okay, okay.
Through review at this point.
Okay, so we could just update that for our forms then.
My, my office. Um, has been involved in drafting an intergovernmental agreement because with with Huddleburg Township because. The development does span. Multiple jurisdictions with with raises questions about. Ins inspections and trash service and roadways and code enforcement. Um, so that should be, you know, coming to the board for review shortly.
I think I sent that to you.
Addresses, right, addresses.
Out of curiosity, which, and I don't remember this off the top of my head, which one of the municipalities has the most?
We did, we did. We we have like seventy percent of the homes.
Okay. So we need some motion, uh, as far as nine two, okay? I'll make a motion to approve of the ninety two day extension for the development, uh, Olden on Sixth.
Motion made by Irene, second by Peter. Well, call Peter. Alright, Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Uh, equipment repair, anything, Carl? Nothing? Okay.
That's good. I like that.
Any, any equipments broken? Alright, I think we're good there. Um, town, as far as the next item is the township property, we're looking at putting barcodes on any township property. We're working on it. Uh, trash dumping, anything new on that, Carl? Okay, we've been looking at uh, game cameras to see.
I'm still shopping around on that.
That's okay.
I didn't get a chance to check out the X suggestion, but I'll be doing that sometime in the next couple of days.
You're up to Bethel Township, Leaning County, near the Ace Hardware.
Yeah.
Warehouse. They had an issue on the road up there with trash. And the signage and the cameras that they have on that that country road.
Okay.
I'll take a look.
Yeah, I guess the the thought process was is having a game camera that sends the image rather than just retains it in the in the camera itself. Right, right. So so the image is captured and it's sent, so.
Looks pretty high tech with that.
Yeah. Um, anything as far as road crew equipment, Carl?
He needs to get stuff for a brush.
Just a brush, yeah.
They'll have prices.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you.
He's working on it for brushing some bearings.
Okay, excellent. Um, the next item is the road issue, Huntsinger Drive Visibility Issues. Uh, forgive me.
I'll lead this one. So, two things. Because people are not being responsible.
That's right.
And not mowing their lawn.
Oh.
I was checking on grass that was probably in excess of over eighteen inches long. And I was coming down the back lane and I pulled up to Huntsinger Drive. And all I did was inch forward a little bit to try to see around the car. And three children on one bicycle, two were sitting on the seat, one was pedaling. At high speed ran right into the side of my truck, went right underneath it. Threw it in park. The kids were okay. Thank God. Mom was there, the whole nine yards. She saw, she was down the street. I couldn't see them coming. They never even stopped. There's a lot of issues that we have on these blind corners like Huntsinger Drive, the back alleyways. The kids are not stopping. They're riding their bikes right through it at a hundred mile an hour. Someone is gonna get hurt or killed. We can't take. You know, the risk out of everything, right? But if we can make anything more visible for drivers to know that there's, hey, possible kids. Rolling through here because there's a park right here or there's a sidewalk. We should try to do that.
You can't take the kids out of kids.
Right.
We can put up signs and say like, you know, children playing.
Yeah, children.
And the other thing we could, as I mentioned about the Saturday meeting, is there are setbacks from a quarter. Whether it's the quarter of an intersection of a road or a road and alley, that you're not supposed to park cars. And I, right now, I don't think that's being observed.
Right, so. Just to throw this out there, that Saldo.
Yeah.
Information I provided you also has sight distance at intersections. That requires all landscaping be kept uh, kept below a certain level.
Yeah.
So for this exact reason.
Okay.
Awesome. And then we can paint those corners right for no parking too, like so they don't pork right at the corner.
Yeah, and then you have to put a sign up because we actually have some of them on Main Street that I had put in, like second year I was on the board, which is like no parking here at a quarter.
Yep.
Um, we can put more of those and. Visibility related stuff.
Yeah.
College, it looks like you're trying to get a word in.
No, no, not really. I I just. I think there are state law and regs on the height of crops and agricultural fields. Near an intersection.
Yeah, I don't know if this is agricultural stuff. I think it's more like bush.
Yeah, this is all in in Main Street.
In in town proper.
Not, they're not in our right of way, but they still impede this.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it cuts down on the visibility, but it's not in our right of way. We'll uh, we'll look at some spots, but there's a lot of things that we can do signage wise.
And I know. So, so that would be a a really, frankly, that would be a good reason to exercise earned domain. To to increase your your right of way to the extent that there are trees and bushes impeding. Uh, you know, sightline. Yeah, so sometimes it's actually signs, like yard signs. Sometimes it's political yard signs. Sometimes it's. Commercial yard signs or yard sale signs or whatever that people put up and they put them out as close to the road as they can. But those signs also block visibility and there should be a lot more care taken. To where those signs are placed or where any obstruction is placed when you're talking about intersections for that reason.
Okay, so we'll do a little more thinking on that, but I think we've got some easy things, simple things that we can do with like kids playing.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that, little stuff and then we'll dig into more.
When vehicles are.
Bigger fixes that we can find.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. Alright.
Just it over there.
Yeah, getting steadily more to Jesse.
Yeah. All right, the next item is the zoning hearing board. Uh, Doug Hoover uh was approved to be a zoning board uh member. Um, and uh.
Can I just speak about that?
Absolutely.
Quickly, because I know I know my my comments at the last meeting, you know, had some people up in arms, but here's. E- essentially, if I. Mister Hoover can serve on the zoning hearing board. Because he's a member of. The Womelsdorf Sewer Authority, but is not a representative on behalf of the township, right? If this if that was a joint authority. And their articles of incorporation required. Representation of the township, then he would be prohibited under the NPC. But simply because he's a he's a. A resident of the township. And Womelsdorf Sewer, he can be on that Womelsdorf Sewer Authority because Womelsdorf Sewer Authority also serves people in the township. So that's how he can be on. The authority board and also on the township zoning hearing board.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a courtesy. Why wasn't I informed that I didn't?
You're announcing it tonight.
Yeah, but why wasn't I? Oh, the hell. Why did I have to read it here?
They're announcing it tonight, definitely.
Not respectful.
Next item is uh for meetings, we're switching from Zoom to Teams. The information is remaining the same.
But the 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 team's information is all static. It's all the same.
Did we ever? Take action to actually officially point him to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, the last.
I.
Meeting, I thought we did.
You'll just be safe.
I thought you appointed him contingent upon what he found out. That's what I thought you said, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll double check.
Okay.
Meeting minutes.
That's what I think he did.
To revise that.
Yeah, to revise it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so that was done last meeting, so I'm not sure. He wasn't here for that, but.
Well, we hadn't really liked it. It wasn't done done.
Right.
Because there was still the question about the board. Um. So, yeah, this is the first actual meeting where. That would be. Official, let's say. Um. But to your your statement about the meetings with Zoom.
Yes.
Um, that is uh updated on our website. All the links are changed.
Thank you.
And uh, we've done the past probably three, possibly four meetings. Entirely on on Teams. We did uh a month's work where we're doing both at the same time and appointing people over here. Um. But we're completely on Teams now.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, the next item.
Does anybody want team?
No, there's nobody on. I would I would have told you.
Yeah. And if you want to know how to do that or get to that, you could always call the office and we could walk you through it as fast as we can.
Anytime I put the agenda up, I put.
Yeah.
All you have to do is click it.
Yeah.
Isn't Doug Hoover son-in-law running for supervisor?
Todd Crick? I think I think Todd is standing son-in-law.
Yeah, Todd Todd Crick is the son of son-in-law.
He is he is running.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, snow emergency.
I guess I'm left to run too.
Um.
I don't know the guy.
The uh.
I don't either.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out.
Know who comes in here.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
We're trying to figure out what we can do during snow emergencies. We obviously can't park the cars at an angle on the street because the road doesn't permit us. The width of the roadway does not permit us to do that. We've been talking about still alternate side of the street parking, and I think this is, you know, something we have to revisit again.
But we're working on trying to figure out the exact process for that. Uh, because it was very nice that the gentleman that owns the church was willing to let people park there, but it is kind of an insurance liability.
Yes.
For us.
Yeah.
For a number of reasons.
Yes.
Um, so if people want to park there, he's allowed to do allowing them to do that, that's great. But it's not something that we're going to officially. Go.
Yes.
On us as the township.
Yep. Okay, the next item is the pension plan contribution.
Us, yeah.
History items. Oh, history, yes, forgive me.
It's not just me that does that.
Yeah, oh, yet now it was me. All right, Jesse, do you want to take this one thirty one?
Sure, thirty one, history items, who's responsible for the items and what to do with them. So um, there's a gentleman that. Dan introduced me to.
Mm hmm.
He helps run the Top Hawken History um organization. Um, I would like to have him come up and look at some of the stuff.
Sure.
And give him a tour. And see if there's anything of interest that they want to. Display in their facility. Um. If that would be okay with everybody here.
Absolutely.
Personally, I know we talked a little bit on Saturday. We have enough, we have a lot of stuff and we have a lot of duplicates of stuff.
Mm hmm.
So I I'd like to see us donate some, especially some of the duplicates to the Top Hawken stor- Historical Society. The school, because they had expressed an interest in some of the the items. And really get it to places where people are going to see it and experience it and enjoy it.
Appreciate it, yeah.
It being locked in the second floor of the township building.
Well, we need space. We need to either store it or get rid of it. Because unfortunately, if the building would get condemned, it stays in the building.
Yeah.
When the building goes down.
More specifically, if we're doing renovations.
If we do reservations, renovations, it has to be moved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
One way, not the other.
It's either gotta go.
Stuff has to come out.
One, if it goes into storage or if it gets donated or or. I don't want to see it get thrown away.
Yeah, I don't want to see any.
I want to see the community still be able to enjoy it, but. It's it's going to be in the way of the building renovation.
Yeah, one of the things that we had talked about on Saturday was maybe making a line of inquiry to the Historical Society to say like, you know, we're. We're happy to donate a bunch of stuff. Would you be able to maybe like store or babysit this?
They have.
Yeah.
They have an elevator in their building.
Yeah.
So they're ready to move things up and down from their museum. To their storage facility, to their library. They can.
They're.
Move a lot of stuff.
They're going to be equipped to be able to properly store it, so it's going to be in good hands too, while we're mucking around doing whatever we're doing with the building.
This is a church or something? Oh, sorry.
What?
Church, did they want something?
They wanted the organ. They're trying to figure out a valuation on the organ because if we just give it away, we have the the. Kind of the difficult situation of. The township giving away property to a private resident. So we got to figure out that bit of it because all of us objectively have no problem with getting the organ back, because that's where it came from.
Right.
We just got to figure out legally how to do it.
Right.
Do the Kempler gave that Victoria, the Victrola.
Yeah.
That uh and Victoria gave her. And she would really like it back. It should not be sold back to her.
No, we're not talking about like selling any stuff.
No.
No, 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 but she liked that back, not destroyed, but she liked it back.
So this is the issue. When you donate something, it's a gift.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ownership of it changes.
You just said if they demolish the building.
No, 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 no.
You're giving stuff that's a Top Hawken Historical.
But that's an organization. That's not a private resident.
Hold on.
Yeah.
So the goal here. Is things like the Victrola probably not end up getting donated to another collection like the Top Hawken Historical Society. That will probably ultimately come back to the township once we're done with the building. What I'm talking about is like we have like three or four um. Baseball uniforms or we have.
But what we're talking about, if the family wants it back, can they have it back?
Depends on the value. It depends on the value. Depends on the value. There's there's nuance in the second class township code. About. You know, hitting a value and then the township not being able to. Dispose of the property.
There's a book back there, people donating.
Of to dispose the property without without bidding. And one of the exceptions. To that bidding requirement is actually, you know, conveying property of the township to a nonprofit.
Yeah.
So there's there's a lot of nuance there and much of it depends upon. What is the value of the property? You know, seeking to be.
Not to mention there's the whole fact, it's like, oh, you donated this thirty years ago and you changed your mind that you'd like it back.
They don't want to give it to somebody else.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and again.
The problem is a gift is you don't want to use.
And again, I think we're we're splitting.
This is a little premature.
Yeah, and again.
Well, you're you're talking about reconfiguring the building. You you've got a a. Thousand dollar, couple thousand dollar. Bid on. Uh. Talking about the space allocations and so forth. Uh. One of the concepts that was floated.
Yes.
Ten years ago. Was uh recapturing the shop space.
Yep.
Using that as a meeting room, where the grater is using that as a kitchen, if you wanted to have an event space.
Yeah.
You don't need a a boys bathroom for thirty boys.
Yeah.
Uh, you can just, uh.
The goal, the goal is.
And and the concept then was to move those two spaces downstairs.
Yeah.
Uh, into what is now the meeting room and. Whatever that other room is.
The change part, the floor plan will change substantially.
Well, they can't, but that, like I said, this conversation is way.
Yeah, I think to your point, we're putting cart before horse. Bottom line is, we're not talking about donating like the bell or the Victrola or anything like that. The donation would be things especially that we have duplicates, duplicates, quadruplets of of like, oh, we've got these pictures of. Oh, the the Millway on the one end of town. And we've got four of them. We don't need four of these. We can give one to Top Hawken. We can give one to the school. We can keep one. We can keep two. But we need somewhere that's going to be able to to caretake on that while we're doing this.
But what about Wilmer getting that?
We haven't finalized anything, yeah.
The only. The 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 nuance, as as Paul put it on that one, is that was very recently donated. And that was the the organ was like a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that was.
It was in the grand scheme of the universe. It's relatively recent.
Yeah.
Um, and that was some weird situation between the the old. Church and. The the now property owner where they they didn't include the organ and they donated it to us. So again, there's there's nuance that goes into this. I mean, I don't think we want to open Pandora's box and, you know, everybody can just come and grab things that, you know, have been previously donated. But there there would maybe situations where that would be something entertained by the board. And as long as it's legally allowed. Then. We can we can do that sort of thing. But again, I think we're we're going down a a path here that we're we're not going to be able to make any decisions on. We're just going to talk in circles.
Yeah.
Well, when will we legally know? If things can be given back?
First off, I need to know where that logbook is. Right?
We're gonna go.
And I need to read it.
Yeah.
From cover to cover.
There is.
Yes.
Supposedly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Jesse and I are going to get. I don't know how current it is.
All right. Anything, uh.
Anything else?
Anything else to say? All right. Next item is the pension plan contribution. Uh, Lisa has met the requisite thousand hours for. Participation in the plan and that the calculation is based on the amount of money that she earns. Within that thousand hours, which uh is a thirty thousand one hundred seventy three dollars and fifty two cents. Five percent of that is what the contribution is, which is four thousand, excuse you, fifteen percent. Excuse me, fifteen percent of gross salary. That uh number is a four thousand five hundred twenty six dollars and three cents. I'll make a motion to contribute to the pension plan for our secretary, Lisa Pageli, for the amount of four thousand five hundred twenty six dollars and three cents.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Irene, second by Jesse. We'll call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
For budgeting purposes, we will need to consider that.
Yes.
Next year because he'll.
Yes, yes, Paul will be eligible.
Talking to the priority.
Yeah, probably.
Yep, yep, and we'll get that set up for you.
Already.
Good. Uh, the next item is record keeping. Um, this is something that Dan and I have been discussing at length, Lisa as well. We're going to come up with a system to go through what we currently have here as well as at the old building and start the process of having our records. Uh. Put in order, maintained, and go through what we can and dispose of properly according to our records management guidelines.
Throw some notes together on a data and record management plan. Um, Jesse had welcome your input on it too. I know we were heavily in that.
You guys think about things completely different than what I do.
Well, I mean, we both have experience operating in an environment that has very strict, especially with me with the bank, we have very strict requirements on data retention. So we don't necessarily have to go to that same level of stringency, but we can adopt some of the practices that make it a little easier to do.
And keep him in the loop because he's going to be the one spearheading it. We're just trying to figure out what we can do just to keep moving forward so that. It's not dependent on me sitting here, you sitting here, Jesse sitting here. These are things that have to get done. And unfortunately, being bumped out of four twenty Water Street has really brought it to our attention that it needs to be done.
I'm sure there's going to be some cradle to grave.
Oh, yeah.
Documents.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Some of the plans.
Yeah.
Like the maps have to be retained.
Forever, yeah, there's there's indefinite stuff.
But if you set up your, I'll call it catalog.
Yeah.
We'll lose term of it. You set that up right, you'll have a list of things to go, okay, this was committed on the twentieth or the the twenty twenty year. It has a five-year lifespan, so then we have something that says, okay, these are the documents that are expiring this year that need to be. Destroyed or, you know, otherwise disposed of.
Yeah.
Or they have to be ordered now.
Right, right, that's the thing.
First thing.
And and this is probably a two to three year plan and as far as like better storage for some of the documents, because the way. Some of the items are stored, especially the maps, they're just going to continue to deteriorate. We need to preserve them better. So.
Step step one is let's figure out the system. Step two is let's put some of the things in better storage and step three is actually executing on it.
Yep. Um, the next item is the Burks County Cooperative Purchasing Council. Uh, this was approved at the March of. Board Supervisors Meeting and we just need to sign paperwork.
That's here. I know that you've had a question, I think, for Paul on something.
No, he already answered that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get it.
After this sign, we can remove this from the agenda then. Okay. Um. Okay, the sign out front, uh, anything?
Still in the process of it. Um, as I mentioned on Saturday. Um, I press gave my wife a helping me. Uh, we don't have Illustrator right now, so she's working on it Photoshop.
That's fine.
A little while.
That's fine.
But it looks good so far. We're just making it so that it's able to be scaled. So that you can use it on like letterhead or a sign. If you just do it as a picture, it gets all gray when you blow it up.
Uh, Jesse, do you have any uh, information about any safes? I know you've done, looked at that previously.
I know, um.
Yeah.
Academy Sports that just moved in here.
Okay.
Has some really good prices, it's quality.
If you could get us, I'm afraid, because we need to see.
We gotta see what size we need and what, what weight limit we can have.
I think that's a good conversation for Lisa, because Lisa has probably a relative idea of what we should be putting in the safe.
Yeah, the size.
Returning to the safe is what we have at the old building. The old, the old safe is anywhere between fourteen to sixteen hundred pounds.
Unloaded.
And it could not be moved over here because the floor wouldn't support it, so. Uh, and then the, the next item under the setting is the laptops. Uh, what was it, three hundred and twenty-three dollars?
Twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
And uh, how many were we looking at purchasing?
Two.
Two, alright. Um, and so we needed to purchase these laptops because. Our current computers do not support some of Windows eleven and we need some information for the GIS system. And because uh, Carl, it would be more useful to Carl to have something portable. To use when he's out on the road, uh, to. Okay, but with the GIS system.
The Lisa computer.
Yeah.
And the like treasurer station.
Yeah.
To get them Windows eleven compliant and we, we got those computers during COVID.
Yes.
So they're, they're probably almost five years old now. It's, it's kinda weird to think about, but.
Yes.
They've sort of reached end of lifespan for a couple of different reasons and. That's the idea of like too, that you really, there's a steal of a laptop.
Yeah, it's like what, three hundred and forty bucks?
It's three hundred and twenty-three dollars and it's got a five hundred and twelve gig hard drive, which is plenty for what we're doing here. Got a decent CPU. It's got twenty gigs of RAM. Got a graphics card in it.
I might have to buy one too.
Yeah. Yeah, do you have anything to say? Do you want me to send you the link?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he wants one too, see? Now, you're in the business. You get a commission out of this.
I'll, I'll, I'll. The access for Dan because of the, the problem we need to.
Need to get some.
Solve my seat, okay. I just saw that then, alright.
I would just do it, but I can't.
Okay, I know. I'll make the motion then to approve the purchase of two laptops for the price of three hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Irene, second by Jesse, roll call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
The next item, we have a candidate for road crew and this is Miss Abby Lip Tech. Um, is that something we wanted to do currently or we wanted to wait till the end of the meeting?
Rather than make her sit around or anything like that.
You made that poor girl sick through.
Two hours, yeah. Yes.
But uh, so, so Abby, you have a, a valid driver's license. Okay, um, you, you've used things like mowers and, and things like that. Um, you obviously know and uh, can work well with your potential coworker. So, I mean, I ha- I don't have any objection to adding her as part-time road crew.
Not at all.
This, this would help.
Did she do a good job mowing grass? Did she ever mow your grass?
She'd be able to use a vehicle to follow you when you're doing, okay, and that's, that's where we're hurting right now. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the other person that we're, we're also talking to and maybe we can have them. Okay, yeah, it's John Claypool who actually did. Um, but expressed an interest in coming back and, and doing stuff again, so I'd love to talk to John and get him added on, but. If you're, you're capable and willing, then we'd love to have you on the road group. So, I'll make a motion to uh, add Abby Lip Tech as part-time road group.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
See me, I'll get you the paperwork then.
Alright, so the next item is uh, that's just really big grass clippings and yards.
Well, because we've been going back.
No, grass has been an absolute disaster for me for the past two months. I've been hearing about grass. I'm sure he's heard about it because I've been calling here losing my mind. Yeah, I saw amazingly today, amazingly, I got a call when that happened actually. So, there's, there's grass in town that is exceeding over eighteen inches. It's ridiculous.
Is it a craft?
What we need, what we need is a, a new and better grass ordinance.
Well, what?
Okay.
I know we have the twenty, we have the twenty eighteen.
It's in the IPMC, because like the IPMC is, is.
It's pretty strict.
Well, then we need to be enforcing.
It's, it's a matter of enforcement.
There's no reason it should have made it to eighteen inches at all.
Right, you call the office, we'll ask Craft to go out. I thought you were talking about.
I think this, I think the limitation. Maintenance code is maybe six inches.
Yeah. We look into it.
Yeah.
And you already have the.
Yeah, we already, we already have.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the Grange property and there's a few more in town that I cannot.
Many properties.
There is many.
If you, if you see it, please call the office. As a courtesy, if you're comfortable enough with your neighbor, sometimes just give them a knock on the door just to make sure they're okay. We've had instances where people have been sick or hospitalized and they can't physically get out and do it. So, right, so if you're, if you feel, you know, comfortable enough knocking on that neighbor's door, just making sure that they're okay. If they shoo you away and say, you know, all kinds of nasty things, you know.
Craft can't be everywhere all at once.
Just call the office, give us the address.
They have to be out.
And, and we need, we need to send, when it pertains to grass, we need to send a uniform letter out for, to the entire township. Because just like in, just like in other areas, I walked down the back lane of, of. Douchburg passes all over it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Now those back lanes are slow speed.
Right.
Now, when I drive out in these roads where all the farms are at.
Yeah.
They don't care where they're mowing their grass. It ends up in right in the middle of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I come around my motorcycle at forty mile an hour trying to dodge a pothole.
Yeah.
Now I'm dodging grass on the street too.
Yeah.
So, so I wasn't too sure. Right, it is illegal to discharge your grass clipping onto the. Um, and any other debris that could interfere. So if you're doing a construction project and you're dumping a ton of soil. You cannot do that. You cannot leave your mulch on, on the road. It is a public road. Um, I've seen that all the time and sometimes people get deliveries of mulch and stone. It cannot be left on the road. That is a public road. Um, so please keep our streets clean first, for everyone's safety. If uh, there's uh, it's, it's PA code as far as the. The uh, grass clippings and debris, but we can do up a specific ordinance for grass clippings. I have a sample, I think, from South Idleberg Township.
It's already.
Lisa had picked up one most of. It's, it's not as clear. You could be more specific, correct me if I'm wrong, Colin, if we think that, that we need to go that route.
I think the first step is if it's already prohibited is, the next time we send out a newsletter. Is we just make sure that that's included in there that like, don't forget. You have to keep your grass at six inches or less for, you know, for code, whatever wording we wanna use for it. And when you're trimming your grass, you cannot eject. Clippings into the road. In the same way that when you're shoveling or snowblowing, but you don't shoot that into the roadway either.
So, do we have a number of items we wanna send out as a uh, as a newsletter then to include that?
This is populating that so that it's worth the, roughly it's about five to six hundred bucks to send out a.
Right, well, what's, what's the um, what's the price of a stamp? Is it seventy cents? Yeah.
I had it since I bought stamps.
Seven eight by July.
Yeah, so, so I'll just plug in.
Yeah.
I am working on the newsletter updating that.
Yeah, so.
I will be able to get posted on the website. I will be able to get it posted on the Facebook, which I think. Kelly, a lot of people are starting to find that Facebook page. Um, but yeah, I'll begin a newsletter right that way.
If we're looking at mailing again, we're looking at a, a little over six hundred dollars just for the, the postage. If we're talking about having something formally printed, it's just gonna add to the cost. So, even if it's just our paper, you know, that we're doing here, it's. They're still costed with the envelopes, et cetera, and the time, so if that's something that we wanna do.
If we have enough.
We could put up, we could, um, Lisa, update what we've previously had.
And I agree, we can put out reminders and we can, we, we need to enforce what we have, but here's, here's one thing, I would. I had a surgery, right? Everybody knows I was injured for a good long time, right? My grass still never made it above six inches.
Right.
Never.
Right, but.
Right, and I get that you gotta have some, some empathy for people that are having issues. I get that. Be a good neighbor, try it. But. But, but, when you, when you buy a piece of property and you are not renter, a renter and living in an apartment. Your responsibility is to keep your property up to. What the desired maintenance should be.
I agree with you, however, well, just, just to be, just to be fair. I don't think we're gonna be so draconian about that. It's like somebody had a heart attack and we're gonna split hairs.
Right, right. Actually, when I had my surgery, I called into Susan and I said, Susan, if my grass gets a little high. I'm literally laying in a bed right now.
Yes.
Right, but it never made it that high.
Yeah.
Because I made sure it got mowed anyway.
Yeah.
Because I wanted to be a responsible property owner.
You have that.
If somebody sees something, like it's a craft, can't be out there all the time, and every time we send craft out, it does cost money, so we wanna be.
So if these people are starting to cost us money, maybe we should start finding them.
Again, that's.
Yeah.
There's, there's violation stuff in IPMC.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, craft is going out.
They are, and it's costing us a lot of money.
There have been a lot of those violations coming in.
Yeah.
Like Peter said, they can't be everywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
But the problem is a lot of the residents, because I get phone calls for a lot of other things and they're afraid to say something because.
They don't wanna start a fence war.
They, yeah, they don't wanna, and the thing is if somebody calls in about the neighbor. I'm not gonna be going, calling the neighbor and saying, hey, so-and-so just called me.
Right.
It, everything is being kept confidential, so it's not being told.
Right.
Who calls or who's calling somebody.
Right, right.
But if we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta let us know.
And what, what should Lisa do in the situation when someone calls in and makes a complaint, but then they say, well. I want you guys to know this, but I don't want it to be a formal complaint. And she, what if she gets that five or six times from the same person? What should she do in that situation?
Point, you should lodge it for.
Guys, that, that's what I wanna know.
Care enough about it to make a, a, a blanket statement if we want you to know like five or six times, you should care enough to make a formal complaint.
Well, how about the number three? So I told Jesse if this one calls in again, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I got, I got some nasty grams and then like I responded back that time and I CC'd you, I said, you sent this to my township email? Formal complaint.
Yeah. Yeah, even just please direct, please talk to Jeff Jesse at home, poor guy.
No, it's okay, but.
But a, a, any complaints should be directed to the office. If you can't make it to a meeting and you have a public comment, a concern, you could email it in, you could call the office. It could be listed and read out loud as, as a concern.
Lisa's like, no, please bug Jesse.
When the residents call you.
Yep, and then I call you.
You gotta call me and then. Everybody's involved and it involves too much, so if you directly come to me, I can address it to.
Yeah, whoever needs it.
Whoever needs it and it just kind of cuts down. You know, because, you know, there's a lot going on, like the minutes. I'm trying to do minutes and a lot of stuff's going on and it stops me from doing these minutes and I'm trying to get these caught up as fast as I can.
Yeah. By this. By the way, if you see something.
Yeah.
And that you think is wrong, call anybody in the township.
I love to call out, you'll straighten them out. Right? I'm trying to get an ordinance about not burning in town. You think I'm gonna do that?
Okay, so the uh.
Next time, um, the road master training for the Burks County Works Association and that is July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at Ole Fairgrounds. It includes tire safety training. Is there any fee to that, Carl? Okay. Right, Carl's gonna be attending that. We don't have to motion on that, do we?
No.
No, okay. The next item is the committee for the building. Uh, this is a seven member committee. Uh, there is a signup sheet. The deadline to sign up for this was May twenty-third, uh, May first, twenty twenty-five. And the committee needs to be selected.
There are. And full.
Okay.
I think some of the sheets were good movement, but I kept everything just to make sure.
Okay, so is this something we have to do right now or is this something?
Well, I mean, we should form that board because there's a lot of people waiting to be on it.
So. Matt Bardhart is, I think everybody, all of us can agree on Matt being selected.
Yeah.
And Matt would be outskirts, like not town center, not Stone.
But he's charming forge.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that would be white and stop me if he has disagreement. My, my sort of vision on this is, since it's a seven-member board, we have two people from Stonecroft. Two people from town center, two people from, how to be the outlying areas where they're carving forward or like more of the agricultural area. And then we just pick a, a, a final person.
True.
From wherever.
And I'll, I'll attend these meetings, but I'm on the outside.
Yeah.
So I'm not on the panel.
Most of this is uh, uh, Main Street and uh.
Nobody from Stonecroft?
Uh, there's not a, no, there's a, the, there's a Tulpe View, uh, there's um. Yeah, there's no one from Stone.
No, he says.
Yeah. So, I'll, yeah, decide that.
So that, at that point, we'd pick three and four then if we don't have anybody from Stonecroft. Whether it's three people from town center or three people from. That's, that's possible too.
This person's interests are adverse to the township.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, that's just a hard no for me.
I don't even, I don't even know who he is.
Don't appoint, do not appoint someone if you don't know, A, whether they understand. As they should and be adapted.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think you should interview each person before you've been called fine.
My, my hope was if we go through this, that we have enough people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we have enough people that we recognize.
Can you, can we take a look at these and come back to it at another point? Because this is a, a, a lengthy list.
Our homework.
Yeah.
Cause it's about, I'd say fifteen, twenty names.
Yes.
Be to go through each one of these and decide a shortlist if we wanna talk to them or not, but like for example, Matt is on it. Matt's here, we all know, I love Matt. Loretta's here, we all know, love Loretta. Uh, yeah, you are.
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
Susan, Susan, I know is very interesting. He's in town. Um, I went, I work with her son.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Shoulders. It is on there.
It is on there.
Yeah.
I'll put a.
Do you want, you want your name on there, Beverly?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Loretta, I'm gonna cross out.
I think this one needs to be crossed out.
Yeah.
Now, we've got.
So. That was on there. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, could you put some like a spreadsheet?
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, what about the other ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
This is, this is just a mail. The other one is Maggie.
Okay, thank you.
Dave sounded on that list anywhere.
It was, was the final one. He didn't put an address down. He's not, he's not a resident.
Yeah.
In, in, within Marion Township? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So he didn't put his address in, so.
Yeah, he can be very good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he was at the, he was at the.
Okay.
He would be a master. He doesn't allow him to go on worse.
Well, that's, that's actually good to know because context wise.
Yeah.
It was just his name and a phone number, so.
And is seven the magic number? Um, I was also wondering about maybe some alums that aren't currently resident.
Well, the, the, the board that is being appointed is sort of the decision-making body for bringing recommendations to us, but we encourage. Even if they're not on the board, like the alums come to the meetings, heavy participation is.
Yeah. Yeah.
The law, the law requires anyone on the committee to be a resident or taxpayer.
To that point, like Colin said, non, non-residents can come and voice opinions or, you know, hey, we, we know a guy that lives in a township's over and he does building repair. Have him come take a look at it, whatever. The board members have to be resident.
Yeah.
Alright, next item is the Veteran Memorial Stone, Jesse.
I got one estimate. Did you get to take a look at it?
I did not.
I have not got a chance.
Okay.
I will come through honestly, but I've been.
So, I had, I had emailed and called eight different places about moving that stone. One has finally gotten back to me. One, um, I didn't read it.
Ceiling and stuff?
Um, hold on.
Hold on.
Uh, here we go. This one's, I'll get back to you. Um, now they're all mixed up now.
That's okay. We, we still need more than one, honestly.
Yeah, but alright, so I remember the basics of it. So basically it was like six hundred dollars to move it, fourteen hundred dollars for everything. Moved with the patent and the whole nine yards. So, that was to relocate it. So it was six hundred for just moving, fourteen for the whole job.
Yeah, fourteen for the whole job isn't bad.
So I, I only got one estimate, yeah, but.
You don't need to get, you don't need to get.
It's below, it's below threshold, but we don't even need the three telephonic heads.
I just need to, that, we just need to find the email then, because I forwarded it to you once I got it.
I have it. I just didn't get a chance to look at it.
So, good. Do we want to, uh, yeah, say, I'll make a motion to approve. Do you remember what the name of the company was?
Yeah, wait, let me look in, let me look in my sent. I know I sent it.
Tell you what, I'll go, I'll go kind of broad. I'll authorize the uh, relocation of the Veteran Memorial Stone up to a cost of fourteen hundred dollars.
It was fourteen plus a six hundred.
No.
Was it?
No, fourteen is all inclusive.
Was it, was it?
Fourteen includes it all.
Oh, fourteen, sorry.
So, motion stands.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Peter, second by Irene, roll call Peter.
Hi.
I think.
That's fine.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi. Now we need to figure out where to put it.
Yeah, that's, that's the next thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, next item, Emergency Management Coordinator Port John isn't here. At the workshop meeting, he asked if we could purchase a floodtop table exercise for the amount of. Two hundred and fifty dollars and four sets of tools, um.
This is something we're, we're participating with other townships. We, we buy one, they buy one.
Yeah.
Collectively, you're training one.
Yes.
It's a different topic.